And start. Okay. Is the, are the attendees present?
Yes, you can go ahead and get started now.
Okay, so it's my pleasure to call to order the special meeting of the Tiburon Town Council scheduled for 4:30 today on September 21st. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Fear.
Sure.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Here.
And Mayor Walner.
Here.
Thank you.
So our first item is closed session. Before we do that, want to see if anyone who is present from the public has any comments about the items agendas for closed session? Is there anyone who does?
I'll just address the members of the public present quickly, if you don't mind. If you would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I'll invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star line to raise your hand, or you can submit an email to comments@townoftiburon.org.
Okay, and so I see there's a hand raised. I want to remind you that this is just comments on what is agendas for our closed session. There'll be other public comments, another public comment period available at the beginning of our regular town meeting at 5:00. But go ahead, Camille Goodheart.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You don't sound like Camille.
This is John Goodheart.
Okay.
I'm not sure even that I am discussing what's on the closed agenda because I don't know the matter that was being discussed, but I am speaking tonight concerning the, my neighbors' concerns about the institutional correctional style chain link fence with heavy duty posts and bars being installed at 1960 Straitsview Drive, on which the town of Tiburon correctly issued a stop work order. My neighbors and I have provided comments and concerns about the possibility that the town will agree to allow the industrial posts and bars, even though the DRB explicitly rejected them in their extended deliberations. It is clear from the deliberations, which are on videotape, and the resolution that the DRB rejected the heavy duty posts and horizontal bars. The stop work order and the town's attorney's email accompanying it were also clear that the DRB rejected the heavy duty posts and bars. Eli Flushman, the Assistant Town Attorney, stated in his company email with the stop work order that the bottom line is that the material in the photo from Chair Chong, which is what was approved by the DRB, is much thinner and much less obtrusive than the cyclone fencing, which was approved in error. Further, as the photo shows, there's no top bar or middle bar obstructing views in the fence material that was intended to be approved, as depicted in the attached photo. The town attorney attended all of the council meetings, all the DRB meetings. It is the neighbors' contention that the town council should not allow the heavy duty posts and bars, ignoring the DRB findings, to avoid litigation that has been threatened by Mr. Kefir. It clearly was not the intention of the DRB, and their intention was made very clear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any further comments from the public on closed session items? Okay, saying none, we'll close the public comment period and move to the closed session virtual room. All right. That was a record time. We're all here. Let's go. What's up, Ben?
All right. So the item for you, my email yesterday hopefully made some sounds. Can everyone hear me?
I can hear you.
Hang on one second. Noah, just so you know, you are still in open session on your phone.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn off.
Lee, are we prepared to start?
Okay, great. All right, so we hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Tiburon Town Council at 5 o'clock on September 21st. Lee, could you please take the role?
Councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember here.
Here.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so welcome everybody to the regular meeting and first we need to report out from closed session the town council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met on two items in closed session and took no reportable actions and that concludes my report.
Thank you. So next we move to oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public who would like to speak about any item that is not on tonight's agenda to make those comments. So is there anyone who would like to do that? And before you do, I'm going to let Lee explain the process for making comments.
Yes, thank you. If you would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I will invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand, or you can submit an email to comments@townoftiburon.org.
Great. All right, so I see there's one comment from Doreen. Doreen, if you could introduce yourself with your full name and then go ahead and proceed.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Hi, I know I'm a familiar name to you by now and I am here with Kathy Silverfield and we both have some comments on the housing issue and Kathy would like to go first.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'm Kathy Silverfield and I want to talk about the housing element plan. I asked Deana Tassini, when will the revised draft housing element plan be submitted to the state? And when will it be available to the public? The first response I received was this direct quote from the email. Begin quote, "The draft that is being sent to HCD is the same draft the public saw at the last town council meeting, which included the revisions to densities and height. We are working on the revisions now and awaiting the review by the affirmatively furthering fair housing AFFH consultant, which should be completed in the next two weeks. We anticipate submission to HCD by the end of September." End quote. Since I didn't recall a revised draft being available, I asked again and got essentially the same answer. So I am assuming that Deana meant the July 5th draft plus the staff's report presented at the August 31st meeting. I also asked again, when will the revised draft housing element plan be made available to the public? That we want to see the revised version with revisions to height, density, and the language stating that rezoning has been done on some of the selected sites. The response to this was this direct quote from the email. Begin quote, "When the document is circulated for public comment, you will have a chance to review all the changes. The circulation will take place once we have received comments from the state and revised as necessary. If the comments are substantial, we may need to return to the council for further direction. The comments from HCD are expected within 90 days of the submittal to the state." End quote. From this response, I and others who have seen it have concluded that we will not see the revised draft housing element plan that will be submitted to the state at the end of this month. We will only see the version of the housing element plan that has been revised with changes requested by HCD after their review. On September 14th, last Wednesday, I asked Deana if our interpretation of her response is correct. Since I received no reply, I resent the mail last Monday and received an automatic response that Deana is out of the office until September 27th. So I have some questions for the town council. One, will the town council be notified before the revised draft housing element plan is submitted to the state? Two, will the town council see the revised draft housing element plan before it is submitted to the state? Three, does the town council think it is appropriate that the public will not see the document that is scheduled to be submitted to the state at the end of September? We want to see it before or on the day it is submitted to HCD. If we do not see the revised draft before on the day it is submitted to HCD, we will have to base any comments we send to HCD on the July 5th draft version. The HCD website says we can comment preferably within 30 days of submission. Four, who is the affirmatively furthering fair housing AFFH? And who is the consultant?
Okay, well, just so you know, we're past three minutes, so if you could.
Okay, I have two more questions. Five, what happens if the AFFH consultant does not okay the revisions to densities and height? And finally, who provides the oversight and reviews the revised draft housing element plan to ensure that requested revisions have been made accurately? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to comment that we're, this is, these are comments about non-agendized items. So you ask good questions, we're unable to answer them because it's not on the agenda. However, I will endeavor to communicate individually with you afterwards. Other council members can do the same about some of the issues that you raise.
Thank you.
Okay, are we going to have a comment from Doreen now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Doreen, can you say your last name as well?
Yes, it's Doreen Curtis, C-U-R-T-I-S.
Okay, please proceed. You have three minutes.
Thank you. What I really want to do is reiterate what Kathy said, but focus on three points. I mean, and they all relate to the fact that basically it's our understanding that imminently, based on what we got from Deana, that this revised plan is going to be submitted imminently. When you take all of her email responses put together, it's including a question about when the legal briefing on the timing for zoning would be provided to state council and her same, excuse me, to town council and her response that she doesn't know when that will happen. We were under the distinct impression between that and the response that you guys may not even need to see it again, that they may not even need to talk to you again. We're under the distinct impression that the town has plans to submit this without any further consultation with you and without making anything available to the residents of the town. And that concerns me greatly, particularly since the rules for the HCD, HDC make it clear that they expect that residents will be provided with a copy and they encourage us to make our comments within the first 30 days of the 90-day period. So I think this is an imminent issue that you need to reach out and clarify with them for the benefit of everybody. Tied to that is the fact that I feel, I really know that this is a thankless job, that many of you are still working full-time, that you have all these other issues you have to grapple with as town council members and mayor as well. But I think that the potential impact of this is of such a great magnitude that it really warrants more time and attention by you guys. I mean, I'm sorry to say that and say that I think you have to put more burden on yourselves, but I think that you do. Because as I understand it, your interactions so far have been very few and far between with what Deana and the consultants are doing because that's what your normal process is. And I think more is warranted here. And we're really late in the process, which concerns me. The last thing I want to say is that, and so I'm hoping you will direct them that they must make it available to us at the time they submit it. And I'm hoping that they will talk to you about it particularly because you need to understand the timing for the rezoning. The last comment I want to make is that I am, I understand that you haven't received, and maybe I'm incorrect on that, but I understand you haven't received a brief yet from the town attorney. And I think it's fundamental to how you proceed with all of this and frankly, a little late in the game to not know the answers on how the government code and the laws impact the timing for when you submit this. What happens if you don't submit it by the end of January? What happens if you submit it within the three months afterwards? What happens if you're later? How does all this impact when you rezone? I just feel there's so many questions and so many weeks going by and for the law firm to not have submitted a brief on this by now, I think they really need to be told this is urgent. And I hope you will share it with us, the residents and the community, when you get this briefing so that we can all understand what the impacts are of the timing of this. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think we're going to have a brief comment from the town manager on some of those questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And actually, probably just one. And as you said, you know, this is not an opportunity to discuss items that aren't on the agenda. But I can assure you that when the, well, first of all, let's back up. At the last council meeting, you know, council gave direction to staff on what changes to be made, were to be made to the draft. And that's clearly a public record by looking at the meeting. I can assure you that simultaneously with submitting it to HCD, we will post the version that's submitted to HCD, we will post that on the town's website simultaneously.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you. The next comment is from Julie Jacobs.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. I'm Julie Jacobs and I think we all agree affordable housing is needed and important to Tiburon. And our process has been problematic. Transparency builds trust and we have some trust issues because the first draft of the housing element plan was entirely focused on compliance, but failed to take into consideration safety and quality of life for those most affected by the plan and the destruction to the charm and beauty of downtown that is brought by concentration of the new high-density housing into just two blocks downtown. The first draft of the housing element plan claims to have provided great public outreach and input, but we didn't understand at all the massive changes to downtown included in the plan. There should have been in all of the communications regarding Create Tiburon 2040 clear and prominent statements that high-density housing would replace much of the commercial area in two blocks of downtown, including essential services, CVS, Woodland Market, Rustic Bakery, the Post Office, the Mailing Center, banks, parking lots, and the Boardwalk Shopping Center with the addition of over 500 residential units. There should have been story poles. There should have been images of the proposed high-density residential structures, many without parking or setbacks, superimposed over what is currently there displayed at Woodlands, Rustic Bakery, the Post Office, CVS, the library, Cafe Accra, and other frequently used areas of downtown. That would have been adequate outreach. There should have also been images of the proposed high-density residential structures prominently displayed on the front page of the ark with the addresses of people to be notified of concerns and deadlines for comments. There should have been town hall meetings with opportunities for questions and real-time answers. There should be impact studies related to safety, traffic, flooding, and public services. It may not be too late for all of these things. Please make sure that those most affected by the housing element plan that all of us know what's coming. Even if the revised housing element plan has been submitted, we need to be assured that the three-story hype cap is included in clear language and cannot be compromised or negotiated or bargained away. We will clearly comprehend the outcome of the investigation. We need to know that we will clearly comprehend the outcome of the investigation into legal ramifications of the timing of rezoning before rezoning is done. And that our essential services downtown will be preserved and protected. We need to know we'll have timely opportunities for review of the housing element plan being submitted to state agencies and for feedback and real-time answers to questions on these matters of great importance. Thank you so much for letting me say this.
Thank you, Julie. Okay. Any further public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the initial oral communication session and move on to our first agenda item, which gives me great pleasure to announce, and that is a presentation by Jerry Resin on Measure M, the measure for generating funding for the acquisition of the Martha property. It's been something that's been in the works now for, I think, almost two decades and it's a very exciting very exciting moment. So Jerry, we welcome you. We're excited to hear what you have to say. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. It's a great honor to be here, no doubt about it. I'll so direct your attention to the first slide and for those of you that have never seen the Martha property, this is the view of it from our current Old St. Hillary's Open Space. And as you can see in the bottom left column, it is a result of a coming together of a lot of parties, but important among them is the organization Trust for Public Lands. Trust for Public Lands is a nonprofit whose mission is to create parks and protect land for people. Founded in 1972, TPL has completed 5,000 park creation and land conservation projects across the United States, protected over 3 million acres, helped to pass more than 500 ballot measures and created 70 billion in voter-approved public funding for parks and open space. So you can see why we reached out to TPL years ago to encourage them to help us and they've been very helpful. Recently, they've met with the family extensively, the Reed family. And so let's talk about where we go next. So next slide, please. As you can see, this is the view from the air. The property owner is the Martha Company, which is a family-owned corporation and we have the TPL Trust for Public Lands has negotiated a two-year option agreement with the family, with the Reed family. This is not the same Reed as in Reed Ranch Road or Reed School, but it is a Reed family. And they've owned the property for quite a few years and we're all very much appreciative of their working with Trust for Public Lands to work out this purchase option. The other partners in the arrangement are Marin County Open Space and the listing price was 63 million. It was in fact fairly recently, much higher than that, but the most recent listing price, 63 million. TPL worked with the family and was able to arrive at a purchased option price of 42.1 million. I'm sure all of you that have been around Marin and certainly Tiburon and Belvidere land costs, housing costs would recognize why this has increased so much. But at 42 million, it actually is a very attractive price. The funding will come, 26.1 is going to come from Marin County Funds and TPL will raise the remaining 16 million. And we can talk a little bit further about that as we go through the slides. Next slide, please. This gives you a perspective of the location as you can well see. As you can well see, the property, I'll call it pink, you can call it something else. But the Martha property on the slide on the right is the pinkish-colored parcel, 110 acres. The other pink piece that is just to the right of it, down and to the right of it, is actually not in the deal, but that's Tide Lands underwater land that the family owns. And that is currently not in the deal. We hope that it gets acquired and preserved someday, but it is currently not a focus. The focus today is to preserve the dry land, 110 acres. And you can see that it abuts Old St. Hillary's open space some half a mile where it is adjacent to Old St. Hillary's. And that, as you can well imagine, is an important feature because if you have a small hunk of open space, it's actually not all that valuable from a biology standpoint. Plants and animals need a little bit of room to move around. And you can also see from the slide on the left, we'll get to this later in the presentation. But you can see that Old St. Hillary's and Martha are at the bottom southern part of Tiburon Peninsula, down near Belvedere. And for that reason, the district that we'll talk, I'll talk about in a moment, the Funding District, is from Tressel Glen, which, as you may know, is where, say, Black East pasture is. So the boundary is everything down and to the right from Tressel Glen. The logic being that if you lived above that boundary, that's a street, you would more likely hike on Ring Mountain. If you live below it, you'd more likely hike on Martha and Old St. Well, you wouldn't hike on Martha quite yet, but you'd hike on Old St. Hillary's. Next slide, please. The, just to give you a little history, I've been around on this process for a while and many others have. This is a very exciting moment. But in the 90s, we were able to protect what is today called Old St. Hillary's. And the way we did it was with two initiatives, each of them $98 a year. The town of Tiburon at that time contributed 500,000, which is, as you might expect, is a significant fund for then. And we'll talk later about what might be a follow-on opportunity for Tiburon. From those funds that were used to purchase Old St. Hillary's, we were able to, the interest rates at that time were fairly high compared to today even. And we were able to refinance those bonds, say, 10 years ago or so. And so at the moment, we have 2.1 million in excess funds sitting in a bank account with the county. This is definitely a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this property. As I say repeatedly, there is no Plan B. We either protect this property now or it will, the picture on the right, will be loaded with 43 houses. Marin County has, the Board of Supervisors approved in November, they, I'm sorry, approved recently to put it on the ballot in November. So November 8th, just a month and a half away or so, there will be Measure M on the ballot, which is a tax to protect Martha. The Marin County Open Space District entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Trust for Public Lands. And the regional preserve, because that's what we're actually creating here, is a regional preserve will be maintained by the county, and it will maintain Martha, Old St. Hillary's, and Tiburon uplands. Next slide, please. This describes the expense allocation a little bit better. The funding that is sort of county funding will be the 2.1 million that I described to you, that is left over from the earlier fundings. 18 million will come from the new Measure M. CFD means Community Facilities District. The county demonstrating a very positive desire to preserve this property has contributed 6 million from Measure A, which you all, or at least most all of you, 75% of you voted yes to protect in June, to continue to keep the parks and open space funding going via Measure A. So the county is putting up 26.1, assuming the measure passes in November. And then Trust for Public Lands will lead donor funding of up to 16 million, bringing in the total 42.1 needed to purchase the property. Next slide, please. The Old St. Hillary's and the Martha are extremely valuable from a biological standpoint. These are not just hunks of land that have been trampled and nothing much is going on there. This is actually a very special habitat. And the reason it's so special habitat is that there is a substantial amount of serpentine rock on the property. Serpentine rock is typically a very toxic rock to plants. But over a lot of years, Mother Nature has created plants that tolerate the serpentine rock. And so there are actually plants that grow on our peninsula that grow nowhere else in the world. And similarly, the red-legged frog, which does not, has a breeding ground just off of the property in the Kyle Pond, but forages on the property. And it's, as you can see, federally threatened. Next slide, please. This, these are photos of those plants. Next slide. And then this gives you a little sense of that it's not just a biology paradise, if you will. It's also a great recreational opportunity. For those of you that have walked along Old St. Hillary's open space, that's sort of the upper middle in this photograph. And you can see the ridge trail that you then walked along. And then to the left is, I guess, is the South Connector Trail. At any rate, the property has sort of four obvious trails that create a lovely circle, all with spectacular views of the bay and the bridges. The Kyle Pond, which I mentioned earlier, where the red-legged frog lives and breeds, is in the middle, bottom middle, that sort of flat area is the Kyle Pond. As I said, that the red-legged frog breeds there, but, which is not Martha, but forages up onto the Martha property. And the eelgrass is, eelgrass beds are in this photograph underwater as they're in the bay, that it is also not a part of the transaction. But eelgrass, if you've read about recently, is very sensitive and important for the health of the San Francisco Bay. Next slide, please. This one, and next slide. So that's just a couple, you know, views from the property. Next, we're gonna play a video. But before we do, I just want to highlight a couple of the topics that come up occasionally around the people discussing the property. One is sometimes people have concerns about parking. I would just highlight that Old St. Hillary's open space, which has been there for almost 30 years, utilizes the parking of the adjacent neighborhoods. Martha would have even more than that amount of adjacent neighborhood street parking. Preserves, Old St. Hillary's and Martha, assuming it's preserved, will be a preserve, not a park. A park is where you have swing sets and baseball diamonds and picnic tables and such. Parks have parking. Preserves do not. And so this Martha and Old St. Hillary's already will have the appropriate amount of parking as they are preserves. Another topic that occasionally comes up is housing. Then I would just note that Martha is not in Tiburon. So even if the town council tonight had a wild idea that they'd like to build on Martha, it's not in their jurisdiction. And so the housing discussion that is going on all around the state, any rate, it is not a situation for Tiburon. And Martha, the county has said that they have other suitable, more suitable sites for housing and that Martha is not in their housing plan. Again, I noted that the property, the taxing district is from the southern part of Tiburon Peninsula, from Tressel Glen down. And the value of preserving Martha is that you will not have 20 years of increased fire risk. Martha is fully in a high-fire-risk zone. 20 years of construction in a high-fire-risk zone is not a happy picture. Also, traffic, 20 years of construction trucks rumbling through, literally through downtown Tiburon, because that's how they will come and go, is they will literally go right through downtown Tiburon, out Tiburon Boulevard. And they'll be leaving town as construction trucks want to do typically. They'll be leaving town right about the time that the school gets out. So it will, again, not be a happy picture. The other aspect that I think is worth noting is that if Martha, if the bond issue were to fail and the houses are built, that Old St. Hillary's will go from being a lovely, small, but lovely preserve to being a parklet, because it will end up being surrounded by large houses. And so again, as I mentioned at the beginning, the biology will be degraded. Next slide, please. Oh, no, next is the video. So next, hold on, David, yeah, sorry, before you hit play. So next, we're gonna play a video, a very short video, three minutes. Don't run off on me. The video starts with Amy Meyer. Amy Meyer is often called the godmother of GGNRA. She was one of the three rebels with a cause that literally 50 years ago started to preserve GGNRA. And she is a legend. And she speaks at the beginning of this video on the property. And I think her words are wonderful to hear. So hit play, please. Turn up the sound, maybe.
Jerry, yeah, we obviously can't hear the sound, but the visuals are quite lovely.
Well, I.
And in which the plants that support them flourish.
Yeah, maybe David, start again. Could you start again, David?
Okay. Let me start it again.
Thanks, David.
No problem.
Introducing Rebel Six Pro 5G.
Just about there. Can you hear it now?
Yes.
Okay.
The Tiburon Peninsula is a very special place. It's part of Marin County and yet apart from it. And it has a set of ecosystems all its own. There are mammals and birds that are dependent on the plants here. As I walk along here and see the flowers and the grasses that I can identify, they're quite different from, say, a place further west, where there are mure woods, mure beach over there. This is altogether different. This is something that needs to be saved. It's for a broad stretch of habitat in which these creatures flourish and in which the plants that support them flourish. And if you break it up with housing or in any way interrupt that, you start to lose what is essential here.
Another kind of interesting part about the Martha property is it sits right next to what has already preserved open space on Old St. Hillary's. And there's also space on the other side of it. So it's private land that's kind of sandwiched in the midst of public land. And so the views that we've got in theory are already protected here from Old St. Hillary's. If you take a look at the housing plans, the proposed housing plans that have been drawn up, those views from many angles would be obliterated. We'd be looking at, we'd be looking at houses and a huge water tank, communication tower, potentially, and other things proposed for the project.
Wildlife needs continuous habitat. This is a small enough piece already that the habitat is struggling. Cut it in half and we have damaged it, perhaps beyond repair.
I remember taking walks here with my father, who walks here every day. And he's 83 and in great shape. And this is where we talked about all the things that were important in our lives.
Well, since I was born here and I grew up here, I remember my grandpa, George. He did take me on walks here. We would sit on the hills and look out there and we'd have these long, long talks. And it's just a very big memory for me.
It's a great hike for kids. It's a short enough hike that I think people of all abilities can do it and access beautiful views and see all this nature very easily. We were talking about bringing our parents here, who might not be up for a super-long, rigorous hike, but it's easy enough to get to a beautiful view. And it's hard to find, I think, trails like this.
To be this close to the bay too and not in a developed area is really nice.
The question is, if it's so easy to do to buy this land, why is it?
Thank you. So get me out of there. All right, thank you. So I just wanted to note just a couple more things and then I am done before questions, any rate. I just note that 25 years ago, when we had the second of our two initiatives, there was concern that the tax, you know, that the tax was too much and that it was, you know, a big cost. And I would just note that here we are 25 years later and nobody even knows that it's on their property tax bill. It's a minor item now. And yet, and we have this jewel of a property that is ever-protected for our children. And Martha will be the same thing, that it is an opportunity for you to build value in the community. Just one more thing about the the cost. What will happen, assuming the measure passes, is that it will pay off the existing two bonds that are on, both of them are ninety-eight dollars. It will pay them off. It will, they will be removed fully, and you will have a new tax of three hundred and thirty-five dollars a year. So the net is a hundred and thirty-nine dollars a year more than you are currently paying. And I, that's obviously for everybody to decide if that's worth it. But certainly, I think it's worth it and hope you can all support it. We'll be coming out with lots of material that you'll be seeing, email blasts, print material and such. Go to our website and endorse Measure M. And I'll happily entertain any questions, Mayor.
Great. So now's the time for questions for Jerry. Let's, I'm sure we'll all have comments as well that we're going to want to make at the end. But if anyone has any specific questions right now, please let me know. Okay, so we'll come back to council after public comments. Public comments. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this on this presentation? George Landau.
You're still on mute, George.
All right, here we go.
There we go.
Thank you. Jerry's very modest, but he spent thirty-four years and counting on this project. And I'm honored to be one of the people that had joined him throughout with others. And and we've all heard the term, you know, it's a deal of the lifetime. Well, this is beyond our lifetime. It's beyond our lifetime. The little kids that you saw in the video, three of them are mine. Well, the adult, the young adult is mine and three grandchildren. The little girl's now in college. The boys are in in high school. So when Dana Linker in the in the blurb that will be in the in the Lotus Handbook says that this this will be for our children and grandchildren and future generations, she was in kindergarten when I would take her with the class on this. So it's truly a jewel, not just for us, but for the entire Bay Area, because hundreds of thousands of people see it every day, from the air when they fly over it, from the water when they take ferry boats and boat, and even from the traffic jams. But when they look at it, at least they're looking at something nice. And it and it enhances them, plus their offices. The other thing I want to mention is that this property is already here. We don't have to build it. We've just been to the inauguration, the library, which was a magnificent result. But of years, years of work, this property is here. And all we have to do is just acquire it. We have nothing else after that. We give it to the county and and they and the ranger comes once in a while. So I urge you to support this, to to add your names to the website. I know the council member Alice, in her own website, already mentions it. It would be nice for you all to mention it in the in the website that Jerry's created. And you will see lots of signs. I'm going to probably ask for some understanding to put them on Tiburon Boulevard or places like that where they can be seen. And so, thank you for listening.
Thank you, George. Next, we have Chris Wagner. We can't quite hear you. Lee, can you identify what the issue might be? Doesn't look like they have mute on.
Yeah, the not muted, but it looks like a microphone might not be connected.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. This is Star Porter, and we moved here about five years ago, six years ago, from San Francisco. And every day, we would look across the bay and be in the 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 city life and just say, wow, we want to be over there. And we came over here and, you know, we've we've got friends that went in the South Bay and in the South Bay. It's city everywhere. And you go to the East Bay, and it's city everywhere. The one place in the San Francisco area that has green space, open space, is Marin. So I know you're Tiburon Council and not Marin at large, but I would swear that everyone who crossed that bridge, the Golden Gate Bridge to get here, came here because of the green space, came here because of the the environment and the connection to nature, being able to ride on Mount Tam, inventing mountain biking in Mount Tam. I mean, we have a a culture here. I walk from from downtown Tiburon out to Blackies and back every day. And and it's filled with people. So hiking, riding, biking, scootering. And and what I see is that we are all outdoor people. We love, we came here to be outdoor. And I just want to say that I'm totally in support of whatever we need to do to to keep this land.
I just wanted to chime in and say that I have done a lot of fundraising in my life for charities that were kind of hopeless, like abused and abandoned children, where people would give money and and they didn't really know if the children would be able to receive it. And of course, we help lives, but this is such an incredible once in a world opportunity where our small amount of money on our bill will save something for perpetuity. And it's just such a rare event in anyone's life that they can make a difference and they can see the difference they can make. And so I am playing flat out and telling everyone, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity that's arrived for us. We were praying on it and and working for it for a number of years. So thank you for your for your support.
Thank you both. Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council. I'm gonna jump the queue and start with a few comments of my own. I think this is this is one of the most amazing accomplishments I've witnessed in my life. When I first talked with Jerry, I think it was in the early two thousands, it was impossible. It was impossible. This was, this was something to work on and hope for, but but this wasn't, this wasn't going to happen. And through, and Jerry is right. You're right that it took the work of a lot of people. But it, what it really took was the work of one man, which is you. And your optimism and your tenacity and your refusal to give up and your creativity in terms of trying one strategy after another. It was incredible. And I really, I think we all owe you a great debt. And we all should be and are determined to get this to the finish line. It's incredible. And what I would say is, my observation about it is, I think people tend to look and see what's there and assume it'll always be there. And so they look at the, we look at this beautiful ridge line we have in Tiburon. And we think, well, it's there. It's, you know, th- this is what we have here. But but it would not be there in very short order without your efforts and the efforts of all the people that have worked with you. And I really want to thank you. And I'm pleased and honored that you came to present this to us in terms of what the plan is. I think it's also incredible that the county is able to shoulder as much as it's hoping to shoulder with Measure M, the twenty-six million. And I think we all need to put our shoulders to the wheel to get the rest of the funds raised. But I just want to congratulate you and thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, please. Alice. You're on mute.
Yeah, I know, it's it's remarkable. Jerry Reason and really the Reed family, Trust for Public Land, Tiburon Open Space Committee, they bringing it home at last. You know, the land itself, its habitat value, its unique species protection, there are all immeasurable benefits. But for all of us, continuous open space is a treasure. I mean, it's more than recreational area, even for those of us who are not aware of of its environmental value. It literally keeps us grounded to the earth, surrounded by urban build and gives us at least a hope of being more aware of the invisible systems that sustain us. I think there's no greater gift we can give each other and everyone than to preserve it forever. So let's do it.
Further comments? Councilmember Griffin.
Jerry, it's.
I think Kennedy once said, success has many parents and failures an orphan. But obviously, you are someone that has stuck with this and deserve more credit than most at the age that many of us are on this call. Not all of us. We're looking at what kind of legacy we would leave behind. And you certainly have one that will benefit generations of people to come. Totally to be credited for the work that you've put in on this. I can't be more eloquent than John Weller was and Alice, but I really congratulate you, not on just behalf of us individually, but for the entire area and not just Tiburon people that that drive through and recreate there and enjoy what Tiburon and Marin County has to offer. And thank you so much, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I think the vice mayor began speaking.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Jerry for all of his efforts. As everyone said, it's incredible. I'm reserving my full celebratory enthusiasm for when the ballot measure passes. But, you know, I think it's, what you've done is incredible. The community will support it, and this will be fantastic, like beyond, beyond, you know, as good as the, excuse me, the library opening was in terms of exceeding people's expectations. This is another, just, you know, a jewel in the crown, essentially. So thank you so much, Jerry, for your persistence and and just really, it's a subtle, sophisticated and and extremely hard job that you have done, and you've done it incredibly well.
Thank you.
Push to the finish line. Keep great, keep going.
Yep, keep pushing.
All right, councilmember Thier.
Yes, so Jerry, I remember the day we met. It was before we, I got on the council and the first words out of your mouth were the Martha property. And then I remember every, every time we were either at the Board of Supervisors or before the council or wherever, it was the Martha property. And the amount of tenacity, the amount of work that you have done is absolutely incredible. I think it's been a forty-year effort. And without you, I just, I just don't, I don't see that it would have happened. So I want to congratulate you on getting the the ballot measure on the ballot. I will be completely supporting it. I urge everyone else to support it as well, members of the public that might be listening. You know, and though I'm probably not supposed to say that, you don't have to come on, Ben. But, you know, you said that that Amy Meyer was the godmother of Golden Gate National Recreation Area. So I'm going to call you the godfather of the Martha property. And I really do want to thank you for your work and let you know that I'm just in awe of you, of Trust for Public Lands and Tiburon Open Space and everyone else that made this happen.
And don't forget the canola, Jerry.
Yeah, the godfather.
Thanks.
All right. Well, I think that's that's it for the presentation. And I anticipate that we'll be seeing you before too long after, who knows when, to talk further about this. So thank you very much.
Yes, I will be, I will be back and get your checkbook out.
Yeah, now now you're the Terminator. I'll be back.
All right, thank you all.
Very good. Good night. Thank you. All right. So our next agenda item is the consent calendar. Is there any member of the council that wishes to pull anything off of the consent calendar for discussion? Okay, is there any member of the public who would like to pull an item off the consent calendar for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I, at this point, am entertaining a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you. Lee, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fredericks.
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin.
Yes.
Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor Warren.
Yes. All right, thank you. So now we move to action items. First, first up is the Climate Action Plan. It looks like this is a very environmental evening. Let's, let's hear from staff about the Climate Action Plan.
Yeah, very briefly, Mr. Mayor, Christine O'Rourke is going to give the brief presentation, but I just wanted to tee it up. Back on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, council reviewed the draft Climate Action Plan and based on discussion, public comment, directed staff to make some changes to our draft. And we are returning, and we actually reviewed the, some of the changes with the Sustainability Committee, I believe, last week. And we are now back. And Christine will summarize the changes that were made to the version that you reviewed on June fifteenth. And hopefully, we have a consideration of a of a motion to accept the Climate Action Plan of this evening. So with that, Christine.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Mayor Welner and members of the council. As town council, as our town manager said, we're bringing back the Climate Action Plan that was reviewed in June fifteenth. There were a few changes that the council wanted to make to that plan. One was to increase the greenhouse gas reduction target to fifty percent. We had calculated a forty-three percent reduction below nineteen ninety levels by twenty thirty. The second direction we got was to increase the ZEV adoption rate, or what we were targeting, which was thirty-five percent, and to increase that to forty-five percent.
That's zero, that's ZEV is zero emission vehicles.
Oh, thank you, yes, zero emission vehicles, right. And then the, and then the third thing, we were asked to incorporate the anticipated new residential units from the build-out of our regional housing needs allocation of six hundred and thirty-nine units. So we've made those changes to the cap. And and so in order to reach that fifty percent reduction target, we did need to add some additional programs and to expand and strengthen some others. So under the EVs, the EV rate, as we said, was a increase to forty-five percent. And we included some additional actions to increase the, to be sure that the council was going to adopt an ordinance that required at least one EV-ready space per unit in new multifamily buildings and also to put some resources towards looking for fast charging locations. For bicycling, we increased the target and to twenty-five percent of local trips made by residents. And we felt like that was supported by the increase in electric bicycles and kind of the promise of them. The one problem with e-bikes is that they are expensive and they're stolen. So so the actions really are around providing and ensuring that as new development occurs downtown, that there is secure bike parking so that people are encouraged to use e-bikes or bicycles for running errands and doing their local shopping. For landscape equipment, we. For landscape equipment, we increased the, our target here so that all small gasoline and diesel-powered landscape equipment would be zero emission vehicles or electric landscape equipment by 2030. The sale is banning the sale of this type of equipment starting in 2024. So it's not that hard to see a path forward to, to all electric equipment by 2030. We also added a program or expanded a program around community education. And this is to increase participation in the Resilient Neighborhoods Program to 25 households annually. That's quite a bit more than what already, who already participate in the program, but with some expanded promotion of the program and hopefully also some help from all of the community members who've really pushed for this new Climate Action Plan and our higher targets that they'll help to recruit people to join this program. Then we also added a program to consider creating a part-time or shared full-time sustainability coordinator position or contract with a consultant to implement the Climate Action Plan. There's a lot of stuff in this plan and the staff resources are already stretched pretty thin. So having somebody else to help implement the plan would be very helpful. And then finally, we weren't able to actually reach the 50% target without also including a program to purchase carbon offsets. This is something that a future council would determine if it was necessary. But if there was any, any gap left in between the emissions reductions and the target, then carbon offsets could be purchased to make up for that gap. So for further prioritization, we've listed those actions in the Climate Action Plan of things that could be prioritized for this fiscal year. There are quite a few things that are already happening at the county level. One is a green building reach code, so that could be adopted in early 2023. That would require all electric buildings, both residential and non-residential for new construction, as well as major remodels. Also adopting a green building reach code in early 2023 for electric vehicle-ready spaces. Adopting an electric landscape and small equipment ordinance. There are some other jurisdictions. I know that San Rafael and Nevada just passed this type of an ordinance that would ban gas-powered landscape equipment. Identify and plan for locations for EV fast chargers and also secure e-bike parking in the downtown. Adopting the countywide EV acceleration strategy. This is a strategy that's been developed with the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership with funding from the Transportation Authority of Marin. It was recently released and we are currently making presentations to sustainability committees and commissions around the county, also other nonprofits who are interested in the plan. We're hoping to bring that, we, meaning as me, as the sustainability coordinator for the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, we're hoping to bring that forward to your council in early 2023 for acceptance. And then other actions that could be prioritized is to sign up those households for the Resilient Neighborhoods Program. Updating the website to provide, there's a whole host of information about EVs and alternative transportation, energy efficiency, renewable energy. And these could, there could be a dedicated webpage on the town's website. And then on the town could also use its media channels, like its newsletter, social media. I develop handouts to be distributed at the counter, also at other public locations like the library. And then finally, for our suggestions for prioritization is to explore that part-time or shared, full-time sustainability coordinator position or contracted consultant to implement the Climate Action Plan. So what we're asking for this evening is the council to adopt the resolution and which would adopt the Climate Action Plan. If you have any questions, I am happy to try to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now, questions from council for Christine, councilmember Griffin.
Yeah, thank you for your report. It was very comprehensive. If we were to add a new employee to town, have you penciled out what it would cost or what you speculated would cost an employee or consultant to implement this?
I have not. That might be a better question for the town manager.
Councilmember Griffin, we have not. I think a lot of that would be dependent. I mean, it's relatively easy to calculate the cost of a full-time employee. What's a little more difficult is if you're doing something other, for instance, like a part-time employee or consultant, it would really be dependent on what the scope of work was. So we haven't done that analysis yet, nor have we tried to analyze what would make the most sense. A shared resource between two or multiple entities or just a simple contract for someone with the town.
So we'd have to pass the resolution now and then you would come back to us for that?
That is one, you know, that particular element of it is one of many, many priorities. But yes, if we, if we got to the point where we were contemplating, well, certainly if you're doing a full-time employee, we would, you know, council would have to approve that position. Something less than that, either a contract or a part-time employee, depending on the cost. You know, presumably we'd come back to council for authority to expend those funds because that funding is not in the adopted budget.
Yeah, well, this, this, this plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, this plan is not authorizing any particular item of spending. This is laying out our plan and then anything that is decided upon by the council then gets added either as an amendment to this year's budget or as part of next year's budget.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so now let's turn to public comment on this item. We received numerous letters praising the document and thanking you, Christine, for your work. Let's start with Sana Thomas.
Sorry, it's a little hard to figure all that out. Anyway, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Sana Thomas. On behalf of all of my family here in Tiburon, including my three young grandchildren and the Tiburon Climate Action Committee, which now has 41 members, I'm here tonight to simply express my heartfelt appreciation for this latest draft of the Climate Action Plan and all the ways you've strengthened it and made it a shiny example of what a town can do when it recognizes the emergency nature of climate change and decides to tackle it in serious and effective ways. So without repeating everything I wrote in my earlier email to you all, I do want to say how grateful we all are that you heard us out and agreed to adopt a goal of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions by 50% below 1990 levels by 2030, as well as a goal of reaching a 45% adoption rate for zero emission vehicles also by 2030. These are two critically important goals for impacting climate change. I'm also so pleased and grateful that the new draft includes very strong measures to get us there. For example, by establishing, as Christine was saying, an infrastructure for EV fast chargers that will be available to the public and residents of multifamily units and by requiring that all new construction be all, and major remodels be all electric as well as home appliances and home heating systems at the time of replacement. The strategies, I think, in this new draft are addressing head-on the two biggest greenhouse gas emission culprits, transportation and buildings, which together contribute about 85% of our community's greenhouse gas emissions and by addressing other critically important areas as well. So thank you, thank you for creating an exemplary Climate Action Plan that others can learn and borrow from and for making us proudly part of the Tiburon community. We look forward to helping in any way that we can to ensure the new Climate Action Plan's success in meeting and even exceeding its goals. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Sana, and thank you for all your leadership on this issue. Next is Pat Carlon.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, so good evening and thanks for giving me time to speak. You know, I wrote some stuff, but you know, Santa just laid it all out. I, I read the plan. I looked through the plan. It is so robust. I just want to say thank you for, for, for beefing it up and committing yourself, at least in the plan, to some really important goals. And you know, I saw, seeing Amy Meyer, I mean, yes, she's, she's the godmother. She's a personal friend. I know the family. And now I know Jerry as the godfather. And I'm thinking of you guys as godparents now. Yeah, of climate action plans. And I've seen what we brought together, what we brought to you, you know, for the climate emergency resolution, working with you and then working on presenting to you what we felt was important in the plan. And, and I just heartfelt thanks for you just carrying forth and, and being so committed yourselves. I think rather than, than saying anything else, I'm just responding to the, the way you responded to Jerry Reason tonight. I know now who I'm talking with more. And so I just want to say that as I'm, I'm going off the board of resilient neighborhoods as, as I've been on it for three years, I'll be going off the board. So what I'm really pleased about in the plan specifically is that you now have committed, you commit, if you pass the plan, you commit yourself to a coordinator, sustainable coordinator. That person can work with resilient neighborhoods. And what I've seen in the plan of how, how much you've addressed what resilient neighborhoods can do and what we can, what resilient neighborhoods can do in Tiburon. I just see the opportunity for partnership and getting neighborhoods, getting households involved in supporting the plan by getting them involved and taking these workshops. In the workshops, I'm, I'm certain that they will find that they will, they will be doing something personally to support the Climate Action Plan. And what better, what better thing can we do than to build community support and working with, you know, elected officials and building strong neighborhood community to, to face, you know, everything that's coming at us with our climate emergency. So anyway, I don't want to say anymore. I just want to express my thanks to you. I'm a member of Kosher Far in Tiburon and I'm also a member of the Marin Interfaith Climate Action Committee. Micah and with, and then I was called by Santa and Pat Goss to help them implement, you know, bring forth the climate emergency resolutions. So although I don't live in Tiburon, and I, I, I'm so, my heart is in Tiburon. So with that, thank you so much and I'll just close with that.
Thank you, Pat. Any further comments? From the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and return to council for our comments. Who would like to speak? Well, if no one else is going to speak, I'm certainly going to speak. So I think this is an outstanding plan. And I think it has a lot of, there are a lot of people to thank. Certainly, our consultant, Christine O'Rourke, thank you for putting together this plan and then adapting it as, as we received input from many different sources. I want to thank the, the members of the Climate Action Committee and in particular Sana Thomas and Pat Goss, who met with, met with us, well, met first, I guess, with the Sustainability Committee, which is Alice Fredericks and myself, to talk about the Climate Action Emergency Resolution that we passed. And then gave us and our staff really tremendously detailed and thoughtful comments that are reflected now in this report. Probably most importantly, challenged us to aspire for even more. And so I think, I think what this, what this plan does when, I should say, when it's adopted, not if, because I think it's like, very likely to be adopted tonight. What this plan does is it, is it places Tiburon squarely in the front in terms of being a leader to address this climate emergency. And the, the issue of climate needs to be dealt with on a global level, on a national level, but it also very much needs to be dealt with on a local level. And I think this plan, you know, will be a template for other communities who are seeking to do their part to deal with this climate emergency. And I'm very proud of it. I think, I think both in terms of its content and the way that it was created, which is that it was, you know, it was something that staff put a lot of effort into and then the community put a lot of effort into it. And so it was exactly the kind of way we want to create these documents where there's transparency and buy-in. And the document is much improved as a result of the input of our very thoughtful citizens. So I think congratulations are due all around. And what we'd like to do, of course, is, you know, in a sense, what we've done here is the easy part. Implementing is the hard part and we have to keep our eye on the ball. And that's one of the reasons why it's so important that there be some type of sustainability coordinator to make sure that when other priorities are bubbling up to the surface, that we're always keeping our foot, you know, always, always keeping our focus on moving forward on this plan. So thanks to, thanks to all of you. I see Alice, councilmember Fredericks has her hand up.
Yes, and I'll just incorporate all the thanks. You know, I've always supported these actions. As we worked through the Climate Action Plan, I was concerned about what was feasible. And Santa made me a believer that if all of us get in there, work together and choose a list of priorities to work on in our own personal lives and push ahead for the town, we can make our goals attainable. And I thank Santa. I thank the group for that. And let's go.
Councilmember Thier.
Thank you, Mayor Welner. So I wanted to say to Santa and Pat and Julie and Doreen and everyone who has worked with the Tiburon Climate Action Committee, I want to say a very big thank you. And, you know, I think that what we've done is we've kind of set the stage with our Climate Action Plan for other jurisdictions to follow with a very aggressive plan. So some things that really excite me are 50% greenhouse gas reduction goal below the 1990 levels by 2030, 45% EV adoption goal, and that's what the county's doing. Our commitment, as stated in our plan, to put more fast chargers in public areas because, you know, we really need the faster chargers in order to encourage and adopt our EV goal. And we're also showing a great commitment to adopt a green building code by 2023. I'm very excited about that. And that deals with a lot of the electrification of buildings and hopefully with major remodels as well. And, you know, I, I do really believe that the, the creation of, you know, whether it's a shared or part-time sustainability coordinator is what will make this plan get implemented and what will put us over the top compared to other jurisdictions. Because, you know, it's not just state and federal, it is local government that has to get involved. Because, you know, it's not just state and federal, it is local government that has to get involved to encourage our residents and ourselves to do everything we can to stem the tide of climate change. And, you know, one of the things that I also like is the implementation table that we're actually met, going to be able to measure our own progress. Because that is the only way that we know how we're doing. So this is truly, this plan is truly government at work. And it's what I love to see, you know, staff, consultants, the council, and our residents working together to create the best plan possible. So I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I am so excited by what I read.
Okay. Further comments? Oh, seeing none. Okay.
I can move to approve.
So go ahead. Is that your motion or are you gonna?
That's my motion.
You moved to approve the resolution?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good.
Moved to adopt the policy by approving the resolution. I'll second that.
Okay, very good. Lee, can you please take the role?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Thier?
Duesiaski, yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Wellner?
Yes. Okay, very good. Congratulations, everyone. And congratulations to all the many authors of this plan. So thank you all. Next, we go to action item two, which is a proposed Main Street closure. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And Town Clerk Lee, if you could perhaps invite Tina. I see Tina Shah-Pakadé, I believe, is in the attendee room. If you could perhaps invite her in as a panelist, that would be great. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the Diversity Task Force meeting on September 9th, I believe, the task force heard a presentation regarding a proposed Diwali festival that is, is to occur on October 22nd, 2022. At the Diversity Task Force meeting, the task force authorized funding for the event. One element of the event is a Main Street closure. The organizers are requesting Main Street be closed from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, October 22nd. The town's practices, when a new Main Street closure is requested, we always bring that to council for consideration. So that's what we're doing this evening. Tina, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to perhaps say a few words about the celebration. I, I'll just note that the exhibit to the staff report is a diagram of Main Street, which shows the general sort of proposed layout. And this is very similar to the layout that was used for the Juneteenth celebration. And at the time of the writing of the staff report, we had not heard or had a sort of a final answer from the Tiburon Fire District on their thoughts. I can confirm today that I spoke with Fire Marshal today, and he, you know, he approved, he looked at the diagram and approves of the, the closure based on that diagram. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Tina.
Great. Thank you, Greg. You know, we're very excited about the, the celebration for Diwali, which is the festival of lights. And we're preparing some really festive activity by the community, including music, dance, food, activities for children. And we really think it'll be a great community event to celebrate a big part of the population. And so we would be excited if we would be able to celebrate this in downtown Tiburon, similar to the Juneteenth celebration. And as Greg mentioned, we're planning it for October 22nd in the afternoon. The event to be held from 3:00 until 5:30 with the closure shortly before and after in order to provide for setup and cleanup and happen to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tina. So let's have questions from council. I have a couple of quick questions. There are always two issues that come up with Main Street closures, at least lately. One of them is whether there is going to be live music and where that will be located. So I'll start with that question. Do you have, I, I see on the diagram, I don't see anything like that indicated, but I'm.
So there will be live music, but there will be no stage. So we are arranging for a dole drummer, which is essentially going to play bunga music. And that will be played kind of throughout the street as opposed to on a stage.
Oh, wow. Okay. All right. So you're, you're kind of, you'll be moving the locus of the sound up and down the street. So.
Yeah, it's intended to be really participative, and we're hoping
That's fantastic.
the audience with participating in the dance as well.
Okay. And then the second question that comes up with these kinds of closures, inevitably in our conversations, is whether or not there's an, whether or not alcohol will be served and whether, and you know, how that will be handled.
So the only food that we're making potential arrangements for are, is a coffee truck, which is ice cream. And then we have contacted the local restaurants for people to be able to, you know, partake in food and drink there, but nothing.
Right. But in the normal course, they go into the restaurant.
Exactly. Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Are there other questions?
That helps us out a ledge because the people at the water's edge were very much concerned about having a stage there again, as we did with the Juneteenth celebration. So that covers that. And as recovering alcoholic in my 45th year, I appreciate the fact that we're not selling liquor. Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to add in and thank Tina for all of her work.
Okay, this is question time. We'll have comments after.
I thought everyone was done with their questions. Okay.
Well, but the public has to speak. I mean.
Oh, it's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. All right. So any further questions for Tina? Okay, so let's turn this over to the public for public comment. Are there any members of the public in attendance who wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that public comment period and open it to comments from council. And I'm going to hand it back to Councilmember Thier.
Okay.
Thanks for, thanks for indulging me.
It's a thank-a-thon. Okay. I just, I just want to take a few moments to really thank Tina Shah-Pakadé for doing this. I know this has been a lot of work. And I just want to thank you for the planning, and it's going to be a great event. And I wanted to encourage everyone to come. And I will move the motion after my colleagues have a chance to make comments.
Okay, other comments? I have a brief comment. I just want to, I also want to thank you, and I want to say I'm very, I'm personally very excited for this and, and think it sounds like a lot of fun. And I love the idea of the traveling music, which just sounds great. And I also just want to comment that I want to thank the diversity committee. The idea of Tiburon becoming a, a place where there are lots of diverse celebrations is fantastic. And this is, this is a part of that. And I just, I'm, I'm so thrilled. So thanks for that. Councilmember Fredericks.
Yeah, I, I'd like to add my thanks too. And not just for the work done, but how Tina managed to make it look so seamless. That is just amazing. I am really grateful for the opportunity for us to celebrate diversity and have it something that's welcoming with events like these. And I thank you for making that opportunity available to all of us. Yeah.
Just want to say thank you for everyone's support. I think Juneteenth really inspired for others, like we could be this community where we celebrate all kinds of diversity. And I think that others are thinking about future events to celebrate additional communities. So really excited about that. Thank you.
Great. That's great. Okay, so I think we're ready for the motion.
Okay, so I move that we approve the closure of Main Street on Saturday, October 22nd from 2:00 to 8:00 PM for the Diwali celebration.
I'll second you.
Great. Lee, can you please take the role?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Thier?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Wellner?
Yes. All right. Thanks very much. Next, we have third action item. This is a funding request by the Chamber of Commerce and Destination Tiburon. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. As the mayor mentioned, this item relates to a funding request received by the town from the Tiburon Chamber, Tiburon Peninsula Chamber of Commerce and Destination Tiburon for a direct allocation of American Rescue Plan funds, which would make up for revenue loss they incurred in the fiscal years that were affected by COVID. A little background for you all first. Both the Tiburon Chamber of Commerce and Destination Tiburon received funding that's directly proportional to hotel tax revenue. The first category of that revenue is what we call transient occupancy tax. The town charges or has imposed a 10% transient occupancy tax on hotel receipts, which of course is limited to the two hotels that are in Tiburon. When the, the town, so the town gets 10% of total hotel receipts. And that total amount has ranged over the years. And I can bring up on the screen a table. The town for many years has taken, taken 10% of that total and split it in half and given half to Destination Tiburon and half to the Chamber of Commerce. Destination Tiburon has a separate source of revenue through what's called the Tiburon Tourism Business Improvement District, which the town council has a role in establishing and renewing every year. But the funds generated by the Business Improvement District are not town funds. They, they flow through the town for, as an administrative matter. But the council has no sort of day-to-day discretion on how those, how those funds are spent. 100% of the funds generated by the Business Improvement District are, are go-to-destination Tiburon. And that is, that number represents 2% of hotel receipts. I'm gonna, I am going to share my screen. I don't have a presentation, but I do have the staff report, which has a few graphs and charts, which may prove helpful during the discussion. But Lee, you may have to allow me to share my screen.
I just did.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Hopefully you're seeing a staff report?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so I mentioned that both of these sources of revenue, both the transient occupancy tax revenue and the Tiburon Tourism Business Improvement District are based on hotel receipts. This graph shows you the total amount of transient occupancy tax that the town has collected per fiscal year since fiscal year 2011. And you can see back then, it was in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. And it was generally on an upward trend with a little bit of a dip there, and it looks like 2017. But generally upward trend through fiscal year 2019. So fiscal year 2019 was the last full year, full fiscal year prior to any negative effects of COVID. So you can see in that last full fiscal year, we collected about $900,000 of transient occupancy tax. Now of that $900,000, the town takes, gives 5% of that to Destination Tiburon and 5% to the chamber, for a total of 10% of that total. And again, the, the second source of revenue for, just for Destination Tiburon is also based on hotel receipts, and it's 2% of total hotel receipts. So what this chart shows you or table shows you is from fiscal year 2015. In this column here, which I hope you can see my cursor or arrow, this is the total amount of transient occupancy tax collected. The next two columns are the amounts that would have been received by the Chamber and Destination Tiburon from, directly from the town. And what I didn't say earlier, and I, and I want to make sure I do say, is transient occupancy tax revenue is considered general fund revenue for the town, which means it's, you know, it can be, it can be used essentially for any of the operating expenses of the town. There's no restrictions on that. And it's considered a general fund revenue. This last column, that's after the black bar, represents in those same fiscal years, the amount of revenue that Destination Tiburon received from the Business Improvement District. So as you go down the fiscal years, you'll see we, we sort of reached the high watermark in 2019. And that was, that's consistent with the graph that I was on the screen earlier. And then we start to see the effects of COVID in 2000, but we see the effects of COVID in 2020, 2021, and 2022. You can see that the transient occupancy tax dipped in 2020. And that's largely because the effects of COVID didn't start until March 2020, which is the last, virtually the last quarter of the fiscal year. So we had a somewhat normal first half, and the effects came in on the second half. In fiscal year 2021, you can really see the effects of COVID. And that was really the first, that was the full year of COVID. And you can see how transient occupancy tax was virtually cut in half from 2019. And then in 2022, you see a pretty good recovery, and we landed at about 790,000. So again, this shows you the total actually collected, the amount that Destination Tiburon and the chamber would have gotten from the town's allocation of TOT, and then Destination Tiburon's revenue from the Business Improvement District. So the request is basically to, to, for the town to utilize some of the American Rescue Plan funds that they've received to basically, you know, to replace the revenue that Destination Tiburon and the chamber lost due to COVID. Problem is, it's a little, it's, it's impossible to come up with a, an actual number because it's impossible to know what the revenue would have been in fiscal years 2021 and 22, absent the effects of COVID. In the staff report, I've provided, as a basis for discussion only, I provided two scenarios attempting to estimate what that revenue would have been. In this first model, I took the average of the last three full years of, of TOT revenue prior to COVID. So that would have been 2017, 18, and 19. And I averaged them, and I used that as a starting point. And then I said, okay, if that's the starting point, let's add a 3% increase for the first fiscal year, which would have been fiscal year 2020, and then 3% for 2021 and 3% for 2022. So that's what this table shows you. If you, if you use the three-year average as a starting point and then have a 3% annual increase, this shows you first what the TOT, projected TOT would have been for the three fiscal years. It then shows you what Destination Tiburon and the Chamber of Commerce would have received from the town from the five, from that 5% allocation of TOT. And then it compares it to what they actually received. And then this column here is the delta. Essentially, based on this analysis, the projected shortfall for each organization from TOT revenue is $43,266. We move over to the right. This shows you the, based on this analysis, three-year early average, what Destination Tiburon would have lost, or, or, you know, the, the loss for Destination Tiburon over those three years for the Business Improvement District. Then when you look down here, I simply, if council, if council decides they would like to, to honor the request and, and make the two organizations completely whole through this analysis, this, the total amount the town would be allocating from ARP, ARP funds would be 259,597. And you can see the breakdown above. 43,266 would go to the chamber, 43,266 would go to Destination Tiburon, and then Destination Tiburon would get an additional 173,000 to make up for the Business Improvement District revenue. The second scenario is laid out exactly the same, except for the starting point. For the second scenario, I simply took the last full year prior to COVID of TOT revenue. So that would have been fiscal year 2019. I used that as a starting point and then added 3% a year for the ensuing three fiscal years. The tables laid out exactly the same way. It shows you what Destination Tiburon and the chamber would have received from the town for, for TOT revenue. And that's 46,750 in the first year. And then it increases each year based on the 3% accelerator. This column shows you what they actually received. Again, this column shows you the delta of the three, and then this column rolls up the three years and says the total loss from TOT revenue for both organizations is 51,868. Move over to the right, and under that same analysis, the Business Improvement District revenue, based on this analysis, was about 207,000 less than the bid would have generated. Again, based on this analysis. Same thing here. This shows you, under this analysis, 51,868 would go to the chamber, 51,868 would go to Destination Tiburon, and then Destination Tiburon would receive an additional 207,000 from the bid revenue. And that would be total 311,000. So tonight, I think, you know, council really first needs to decide whether they wish to. So tonight, I think, you know, council really first needs to decide whether they wish to provide funding as requested. And, and if so, direct staff, sort of the exact amounts you'd like to give each organization. And then we're finally, if, if that's the case, we'd like to ask, we're asking you to authorize a budget amendment in that aggregated amount, the total amount from this year's budget, with the source of funds being American Rescue Plan funds. And with that, I'll take any questions. And also, I'm sorry, Deanne Biss from the Chamber of Commerce and Stephanie Furman from Destination Tiburon are here in the Zoom room, and I think would like to say a few words.
Can we ask questions about the staff report first?
Mr. Mayor, it's up to you.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so this, putting aside the question of, of, of how we deal with the request through the business, what is it, the bid?
Yep.
Is, yeah, just put that aside for a minute. I noticed that the ARP guidelines say that loss should be based on the most recent year prior to emergencies. I, I assume, because you offer us two scenarios, we have some discretion with respect to how we calculate those losses in the first place, in the second place. How did we calculate it for the ranch or any other government entities that we gave money, ARP money to?
I'll take the first, the first question first. So you're correct that the the ARP, the final rule for the American Rescue Plan provides some guidance to cities and towns for calculating the town and city's revenue loss. And you're right, under, if, if you're going to calculate the loss, the methodology that's approved or that's in the final rule indicates that you take the last full fiscal year prior to the effects of COVID as a starting point. And then the ARP actually, I think, allows you a 4% accelerator on that. But you may recall that, that the town, we're not actually going through that exercise, because the final rule that was approved by Department of Treasury gives all entities the ability to take basically what's, you know, I'm calling it the standard deduction, to basically say that our revenue loss was $10 million or less, because ours was far less than that. So we, we're not going through that exercise.
We're making it up as we go along.
Well, we, we don't need to calculate the town's revenue loss.
Yeah, we just have free discretion to use it.
We have, because up to $10 million, it's, it doesn't need to be calculated.
All right.
And our allocation is only 2 million, not only, but it's 2 million, you know, just under 2.2 million, so it's not even close to that 10 million.
Okay, so, so, so those guidelines mostly apply to the, to the towns calculating the town's loss, is that what you're telling me?
Exactly.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question. The revenue for, for the Business Improvement District is created in the resolution and one of our ordinances?
It's not, I don't believe it's in ordinance.
Yeah, it's in Chapter 7A.
So the, the town for many, many years has maintained this Business Improvement District. And each year, you may recall, we come to you in, in Ju-, July and June in a two-step process for you to re, to essentially re-up the, the bid for another year. And part of that process is, is basically asking the businesses that are affected, do any of your businesses protest? So this, the bid is really very specifically meant to generate marketing dollars that are then meant to be used to generate room stays at hotels. I mean, at, at, at the very base level, the money's coming from the hotels. The idea is that when we spend the money, it's to generate additional room stays at the, at the same hotels that are essentially paying for the bid. So I'm, I'm not sure if I answered your, or, so you, you renew it each year?
Well, the reason, the reason I'm asking it is there's specific language in at least the resolution, if not in the ordinance itself, that says an assessment based on percentage will result in revenues that rise and fall in reflection of greater and lesser business in an overall up or down tourism market and world economy. So it just seemed to me that the documents or the agreements, whatever they were, that created it seemed to anticipate that there would be fluctuation. Does that limit our discretion in any way as a town council to use ARP funds?
I, I don't believe it does. I, I don't, I don't.
No, I'm happy to chime in on here.
Yeah.
The, the bid, the, the creation of the bid through the ordinance creates a pot of money that's limited for certain particular, you know, purposes that Greg outlined. It, it doesn't limit our discretion to add to that from ARP funds, given the, the nature of the pandemic and the nature of those funds. They certainly don't have a right to that. You know, and the ordinance makes that clear. But let me qualify one other point. Technically, Destination Tiburon is a service provider for the bid. They're not actually the receivers of the money. We have a contract with them to perform the functions of the bid that was established by the ordinance.
So I'm a little confused. What are the parties to this? Is, is the bid a party? Or it's just a pass-through, what agent, what is it?
The bid is, is, is a separate legal entity. And they are the pass-through entity that we contract with, with Destination Tiburon. They're the, they're the, 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 the Board of Directors is the same folks who run Destination Tiburon, if that makes sense, the same board. And every year we have the, you know, the, I forget what the report's called, but the report that they produce that we approve, talking about the out, the budget that is necessary for the bid to exist. And then Destination Tiburon is the contracting entity that spends the money for the bid.
But the board is the same as the recipient.
Correct.
All right, well, that, that, that answers my question about how much discretion we as council have in establishing what a loss is and whether it is appropriate to allocate more money than is indicated in the ordinance and the resolution that established the bid. Thank you.
Okay, further questions for staff before we hear from the two entities? Councilmember Thier.
Thank you. So I did have a question in the letters attached. The request seems to be different than what we're saying in the staff report. So I was wondering if you could just comment briefly on that.
Sure, I, I absolutely. I think there's a couple of different things going on here. One is, when I received the letters, I, I recognized that, that, you know, it was, it was difficult for me to reconcile the numbers that are in the letters with each other, and also with the town's records. Part, part of the reason could be a timing issue of, of sort of when we, when the money was sent, if it crossed fiscal years, it could be timing issues related to fiscal years. It, it just seemed, for, for me, it seemed easier to just start with the, you know, the town's records are the, are the guiding numbers. So the numbers that are in the staff report are the actual, you know, these are the actuals from our financial system, and at least two of the years are audited financials. I think the other thing that may be happening, and I could look at those letters to see, is at least one of the entities may not have included fiscal year 2022. They, they may have only considered the loss in the first two fiscal years, 2020 and 2021. So again, you know, the, the request is fairly straightforward.
Okay.
And I thought, I thought the starting point, using the town's financial records made the most sense, and that's what's in the staff report.
Okay, great. That, that makes sense now. I just wasn't sure what we were supposed to do with those numbers. And then the second question is, scenario two in your staff report is actually the scenario where you've taken the last pre-COVID fiscal year in its entirety, and then as the base amount, and then assumed a 3% increase in TOT for the next three years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? I have a question, but I, I want to see if any of the council members who haven't spoken yet have questions. Okay, I, I have a technical question, which is, and if you could leave the chart just on where it is. So I'm wondering how you dealt with 2022, since we're in the middle of 2022? So how, how did you?
2022 just ended.
Fiscal year.
Yeah, okay. Oh, so these are fiscal years. So that year's over. Okay, all right.
That's, but I will say that's the only number that has not been audited. Meaning that, the.
I understand. Okay. Okay, so shall we hear from the Chamber and from Destination Tiburon?
I'll stop sharing, Mr. Mayor, if that.
Please. Okay, so.
And I'll let you go first, since you're asking for the least amount of money.
Okay, and I also, let me, let me, there's a question I'm gonna have after you're done. So let me tee it up ahead of time to give you a chance to maybe address it as you go through it. And that is, I, you know, in these requests, I, or at least in the material that we have, I see, you know, most of the analysis or all of the analysis is based on what you would have received versus what actually happened. I guess the, the part that's missing for me is what impact did that have on the organization? What's, in other words, what is the funding shortfall at the organization? And what would these funds be used for? So if, to the extent that you are prepared to talk about that, that would be very helpful.
May I start?
Please, please go ahead.
Well, first of all, the Chamber appreciates your consideration for this request. I thought it would be important to just take a step back and understand how the Chamber funds our operations. So transient occupancy tax is one of the, you know, first and foremost, sources of funding, as well as member dues, which we have not raised since 2018, which certainly feels appropriate, given the pandemic, community sponsorships that go directly to events that we hold, and through, again, TOT. So those are our primary funding sources, and the Wine Festival. Wine Festival is a source of funding. So if we go back to what the Chamber's mission is, you know, our, our sole existence is to really promote the economic development of local businesses. And we do that through collaboration and promoting our local businesses. And so if you can think about what that looks like, it could be the Holiday Festival. I mentioned the Wine Festival, but we've really had the opportunity to get into new spaces through the pandemic in terms of providing really needed support and education for our local businesses, whether that's for grants or for resources that would be available to our local businesses to get additional funding themselves. But we've also seen opportunities to really partner with other organizations. I know Tina's on the call, the Diversity Inclusion Task Force, we work with them as a chamber, whether that's Juneteenth or with this new Diwali event. And we're excited about working with the SF Marin Food Bank this year in a Tiburon Gives Back program. So when I talk about collaboration, my sole job and the Chamber's sole job is to connect our local businesses with our community and with our visitors. And so the funds that we are asking for today go directly back to those local businesses to promote them and to support them in this effort in terms of getting folks downtown and through the greater, you know, Tiburon area. So, you know, we've seen such success downtown with new businesses opening. The Chamber's been involved in, you know, countywide permits, supporting our local businesses, get through that process. And we've had great support from the town of Tiburon to get the local permitting process underway. You know, we have a lot to celebrate, and, and these funds will really help us take it to the next level and continue our mission. You're gonna be seeing a new Tiburon video that we're rolling out that really highlights what it is to be a local business in Tiburon and what it is to live in Tiburon with our biking and hiking trails. And we're also working with local getaways, for example, is one example to really showcase Tiburon and all that we have to offer. So these funds go directly back to all these great businesses, new and existing, as we kind of conduct outreach to our community and our visitors. So again, thank you for your consideration.
And can I, just to give us some perspective, what is your, what is your annual budget? Like, what is the size of the, what is the size of this gap?
It, it is all, you know, the $40,000 that is in the scenario one is a significant dollar amount to what we, I would say half of what we're looking at for our budget. We are a very humble organization. We have 111 members. Those members are typically mom and pops. You know, we can come, call to mind the larger members that would have, you know, maybe a 500 annual due. But most members are at $175 level. So when I do say the transient occupancy tax is significant to our revenue sources, I mean it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's really gonna reach out. Yeah, and so, you know, and I, I will attest to, we have 20 members on our board, and we take our job very seriously, and we run on, you know, a slim staff. I'm part-time for the Chamber, and we do have a welcome center team that staffs it, you know, five hours, five days a week. But, you know, we have a shoestring budget, but we're proud of it, and we think we do a lot with it. So again, this is very meaningful dollars to us.
You're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna make up your shortfall by raising dues.
Right, not. And I wouldn't do that, because it would feel very inappropriate right now with our businesses.
All right. Great. Why don't we go ahead with Stephanie, and then we can ask any further questions you guys have?
Thank you, Mayor Wellner. Mayor Wellner, I have a little bit more of an elevator pitch for you guys, so I'm gonna read right off of it. Mayor Wellner, Vice Mayor Ryan, Councilmember Fredericks, Councilmember Griffith, and Councilmember Thier. Thank you for taking the time to hear Destination Tiburon's request. As you know, the American Rescue Plan was signed into law in, on March 11, 2021, and includes 350 billion of aid that was allocated to state and local governments, the bulk of which comes in the form of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. These funds are to be used to address the negative economic impact on local governments that, that have experienced, experienced during the pandemic, which includes tourism and the travel industry. Tourism, the tourism sector was the one most affected by COVID. In fact, at the height of COVID, our hotels and the hotels in our town were completely shut down. The ARP stipulates that at least 25% of those funds be devoted to hospitality industry relief efforts. So Destination Tiburon is asking Town Council that those funds be made available to increase tourism when the town needs it the most. This is a time of opportunity. As our town grows and more restaurants and merchants fill our downtown in the cove, these funds would have a direct economic impact. Filling the town with the visitors it needs to sustain our current growth rate. The funds, much like the Chamber, would go directly back into making our community thrive as it once did. Some examples of those funds and how they'd be spent directly in a more general term would be furthering our marketing strategy in the nine barrier counties and beyond by encouraging visitors to spend their dollars here in Tiburon. More funds would be that more local businesses would be highlighted in our Change the Way You Bay campaign, which I went over with each of you in June. You know, right now, we only have three key visuals for that, and we'd like to expand it to nine key visuals and have those grow throughout the nine counties. And more funds, and would continue the strategic advertising to highlight all the new and exciting businesses popping up in town. And finally, at the Society of American Travel Writers Annual Conference I just attended, one of the professional development topics focused on the term revenge travel, which I don't know if any of you are familiar with, but the revenge travel phenomenon is this sense of urgency and impatience to travel once again after all the frustrations and sacrifices by so many people throughout the COVID pandemic. So right now, people are hungry to travel and discover new places. Tiburon is filled with new places and will continue to grow over the next few years. To not take advantage of this growth for our town would be a missed opportunity. As the town's primary outreach for visitors, Destination Tiburon is simply asking to be made whole again and give the chance, the town, to market itself as a world. a world-class destination, which is right within our mission statement. Um, to also address, um, you know, we were asking about the, um, the original request and how the numbers didn't match up. Um. DT's original request was also just an average and did not have the three percent increase. Um, we were just looking at the flat rate of what we had lost in a three-year average and bringing it back to making us whole again. Um, to give us this opportunity as we grow to put money back into our town. So with that, I thank you for your consideration.
And I, I'm gonna ask the same question that I asked Deanne, uh, in terms of what is the uh, what is the size of the general budget relative to what you're asking?
Um, so in the height, um, twenty nineteen, it was around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and, you know, there was a point where we completely, when the hotels were completely shut down, that we just paused our budget altogether. Um, just because we didn't know where we were going with everything or when, you know, things would change. Um, and, you know, kind of just took a pause at it. And then, um, you know, as things started to open back up, um, you know, we downsized the Welcome Center and put it into, you know, a smaller space thanks to Deanne, and then we just split the cost on that. So, um, yeah, it is, it's about two hundred and fifty.
And, and what portion of that is uh, employee salary versus add by kind of stuff?
Um, employee salary is, um, last.
I don't, I don't know how many employees there are. Is it, is it you or is it?
It's not just me. I, we also, uh, Deanne and I also split a, um, an, an assistant. So, and then we also have a, um, well, during COVID, we had a, uh, we did have a social media manager that, um, took up a portion of that budget, which we had also cut. So, um, our assistant is actually doing a lot of the social media, and then we had to outsource once we started to, um, create or generate more revenue. Um, so it would be about ninety thousand if we were made whole again to be able to bring in the social, myself, um, bring it, and I'm part-time as well. Um, our part-time Katie Spawn, who's our, um, marketing coordinator, and then our social media manager back, back into the mix.
Okay. And then the question for both of you, would you anticipate that this coming year, the revenue from these two sources, from the, from the TOT and, and the, the ID will be back to normal?
I do. Um, I've seen the increase of TOT already within the hotels. The hotel again, uh, well, the lodge is our largest hotel, which brings in the most TOT. Um, their staff has made, has been made whole again. They have a new general manager and a new director of sales. So I can see the, um, the growth steadying as it was back towards twenty nineteen. Not all the way there, but with revenge travel on our side, hopefully, this role will be at a hundred percent.
And we're
Oh, go ahead.
I'm like, sorry, I just, I agree with Stephanie. We're anticipating pre-pandemic numbers.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, let's, um, let's open it up for a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that and we'll move back to the council. Um, who wants to speak first? Go ahead, Councilmember Thayer.
Yeah, I just wanted to start and I wanted to thank, um, uh, Deanne, uh, Biss, and I wanted to thank, uh, Stephanie, uh, Furman for all of their work on behalf of Tiburon. So without our Chamber of Commerce and without Destination Tiburon, I don't think a lot of people would know that we exist. And I've actually had the privilege of serving on the Destination Tiburon Board. So I've had a firsthand look to see how Tiburon is promoted, all of the work that goes into it. Um, the Chamber and Destination Tiburon work kind of hand in glove on a lot of the projects and it represents Tiburon so well. And the American Rescue, uh, funds, in my opinion, were given to the town for this very purpose. You know, business went to zero. Um, uh, you know, people were not staying in hotels. Hotels basically had to shut down. So these taxes that would have funded these organizations were, were not coming in and they did not get that money. And I am strongly in favor of allocating the funds as outlined in the staff report under option two, um, to these organizations. And the reason why option two is because I think it's a little too complicated to go back, um, another year. I think it's the year prior to COVID that we should be using. Um, but I also, you know, you know, wanna focus on, on the, the reason why the funds were given by the federal government. And one of the things specifically called out was, um, you know, occupancy, hotels, small businesses. And this would be a way for us, um, to contribute and to try to make whole. I don't think anyone could ever be made whole after, after COVID. But this would be a way to try to offset some of that loss, uh, with the funds that we were given for that very purpose. So I'm strongly in favor of, uh, allocating these funds. I've seen, uh, both of these individuals and their organizations and how they spend funds and um, I think, uh, there's been a lot done, uh, to elevate Tiburon to a different level and also to make sure that all of the tourism and other industries are really looking at Tiburon. You know, post-COVID, there's still a lot of people that want local trips. And they wanna go close and they wanna go right now. And, um, I think that all of the marketing and work done and, uh, business commu- community has allowed, um, for Tiburon to be a destination.
Other comments? Councilmember Fredericks?
Um, so I agree with Councilmember, uh, Thayer about how to calculate the reimbursement. But I wanna voice something that I invite my colleagues to talk me out of. I, I am really uncomfortable, um, about, um, looking at the, uh, Business Improvement District's revenues that were created under the ordinance. Um, as subject to backfill for loss. I mean, they never are subject to towns discretionary use. And further, it depletes the art funds and resources we have before we have a complete picture of options that serve the community. For example, from the consultant's report, uh, the costs of broadband, uh, provision may be much more than, than we anticipated if we had any realistic anticipation at all. Um, I look at that language that an assessment based on percentage would result in right revenues that rise and fall in reflection of greater and lesser business in the overall up or down tourism market and world economy that's in the ordinance and the resolution that, that created the bid. Um, and describes these, these funds as anticipating changes, maybe not to the extent that COVID generated, but on the other hand, maybe it didn't predict, um, the upticks that are coming with revenge travel. So basically, just because it's never been our discretionary pot of money, I am really uncomfortable about that particular request, but wholly support the existing report for percentages to Destination, uh, Tiburon and the Chamber.
With regard to the TOT?
With regard to the TOT. Well, the I bid money is TOT. It's just that we never get our greedy little hands on it.
All right, I have, I have some comments I'd like to make. Um, I think I'll jump in here if that's okay. Um, so I, I'm gonna start with the, with the, the conclusion and then explain why afterwards, because I don't wanna keep everyone in suspense. Uh, my view is, I, I agree that we should use the second type of calculation, meaning just the last year. I think it's simpler and, and is fine. Um, I actually, uh, if, you know, since reading the staff report and now it's even more reinforced, I think that we should stick with the, with the, um, not the IBID funds, but just the TOT, the straight TOT funds, um, to reimburse the entities. And I'm gonna, uh, ex- explain why. I think, um, there's no question that, you know, what the ARP, you know, uh, funds are for, uh, in terms of making up for, for shortfall during the pandemic, but, uh, you know, like with all spending uh, that we engage in, um, you know, sure, everything that we spend on is good, uh, but it's always at the opportunity cost of other things we could be spending on. So I, I don't think it's carte blanche that because something is, is, is positive, it doesn't justify any level of spending for it. It's, uh, we, I think we need to look substantively at what's happened over the last few years and decide what makes sense. Um, I would start by saying that if this is gonna be a, a normal or almost normal year uh, in terms of revenues under these programs, that's fantastic, but it also means that without us doing anything, the revenues of these institutions are gonna go up. Um, and they're gonna be up at the levels that they were at, at, uh, twenty nineteen. So what we're really doing is we're, um, we're backfilling. It, what, what we're providing is not, uh, I guess, really for this year's spending, but to, but to backfill losses from prior years or something like that. Um, and I don't know how much sense that makes. What I would say is that I'm convinced that, um, the, the Chamber operates on a lean budget as, as Deanne was describing. This is a significant chunk of that. Uh, I think they do a lot with a little.
Um, yes.
And it, it seems to me that it's, you know, eminently fair to, um, you know, restore that funding, um, to this process. I also think that, then in fairness, you know, we, we can take the same analysis for that, for that money with regard to Destination Tiburon, but I don't know that, um, without a further specific discussion of what the funds would be used for, other than just saying it'd be used for good stuff, you know? Um, I, I think I would be hesitant to provide, uh, to, to backfill the IBID, uh, amounts, uh, especially given that the revenues are gonna be going up this year anyway, because it's gonna be a more robust year. So I guess my, my conclusion is I would, uh, you know, I'd use the second approach to calculating money, but I would just use the TOT money. And, um, and, uh, un- unless and until there's something more specific about why, um, Destination Tiburon needs, you know, to it's not doubling really, but what is the amount being asked for? Hang on one second. Well, I'm not gonna find it, but I think it was in the close to two hundred thousand. Um, Mark, uh, I, I just don't know that that needs to be added to the regular budget this year in order to make up for what's occurred over the last couple of years, uh, with regard to, uh, Destination Tiburon's activities.
Mayor Wellner, might we ask them, since they're here, as to what the money would be used for?
Absolutely, that'd be great.
Deanne and Stephanie?
So specifically for the Chamber, we would be allocating those funds with our continued, um, we, we are calling it Tiburon two dot O outreach. So I mentioned the new video that we're gonna be releasing, not that that would call, cause all these, take up these funds. Um, but also doing a much more, um, comprehensive marketing strategy with, um, local newspapers. Um, but for us, it is, it allows us to, um, you know, really keep the lights on in terms of, um, my part-time salary and Katie, our shared assistant, she gives the Chamber, um, five to ten hours every two weeks. So we're very grateful for that. And, um, we could also, uh, dedicate those funds to Holiday Festival and other type events.
Stephanie, do you have anything to say to add to that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think, you know, with, um, the cost of marketing and the cost of advertising, um, you know, and I went over three things when we were going over um, the request, uh, you know, the furthering the marketing strategy to the nine Bay Area counties. That means we are on uni buses, we are doing outdoor billboards and outdoor advertising. All of that is huge, is a huge amount, a huge chunk of exactly what we do. Um, like I said, during COVID, we paused all of that. Um, so we would like to, you know, use those funds for big advertisements, taking that change the way you bay and, um, putting that marketing campaign throughout Sacramento, throughout San Francisco. Right now, um, we have, um, Change the Way You Bay uni buses and outdoor ads that are going on during times, uh, right now during Dreamforce, because Dreamforce is going on dur- in, in San Francisco. Um, so it's the money would go directly to advertising and really growing the awareness of Tiburon, the late night ferry, the increased ferry service. You know, all of that takes time and effort into putting in, you know, making us number one on that, on that search list when you're like, things to do in the Bay Area on Google. Um, and we would continue with that strategic advertising and highlighting all of the new businesses popping up into town.
I think an indication of what you'd use money for in the future is based upon how you've used in the past, and you all have seemed to have done a lot with, with very, very little. Uh, I was jumping on this right away because I thought it said AARP at my age.
ARP, American Rescue.
Okay, thank you.
But in my research with ARP, it does, um, you know, does stipulate, like, it directly focuses on that, um, TOT loss. And I've looked at um, examples from other, you know, larger cities, San Francisco, Austin, Texas, Nashville. Um, and their TOT, ours is structured a bit differently, um, where we have the TOT and we have the T bid. Um, but their TOT would be just as large as a portion of the TOT plus the T bid. Um, because that's, that's the only place that Destination Tiburon gets their funding from, much like other convention and visitors bureaus or, or destination marketing organizations.
I, I had a question, uh, Stephanie. So, um, the, the actual funding, um, for the Tiburon Tourism Business Improvement District, the TTBID, um, is actually, is that generated? I think that's generated by, um, a two percent fee on total hotel receipts. Is that right?
Correct.
And then, um, the, the expenditures, um, are used, uh, for the purposes of the TTBID program as approved by the board. Is that right?
Correct.
And so what I've seen in the past is that a lot of those expenditures have gone to promote and bring people back into Tiburon.
That's a hundred percent of what we do.
Okay. And then I think there was an earlier question. I don't know if you have the information right now, but I think the question was what percentage of the total budget would be this, uh, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five, nine, seven, or actually, I think it might have been the one seventy-three oh six five.
Yeah, it sounds.
Was that what you wanted, John? Was it the, was it the, the
Yeah.
T loss plus dust, plus the TTBID loss?
I, I think what, I, I, I was just trying to get a perspective on how much this means, and I guess my conclusion, uh, having now looked at the staff report and heard what people said is that, you know, this year, no, a normal year, there's about two hundred thousand in TTBID. Um, we're not gonna be quite there, but we're gonna be at least close this year. A- and so adding another uh, two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand um, to, uh, to that amount is basically doubling the budget for a year. And I just, I don't know why we do that.
Let, let me, let me back up because we're not, we're not doubling the budget. So during, during COVID, right? The, the, the Destin- Destination Tiburon kept on working and kept spending money without the money coming in.
Well, ads weren't bought, but that doesn't mean we have to buy double the ads now. I mean, that's the.
No, so, so, so let me, let me, and, and Stephanie, please feel free to jump in if I'm not stating something correctly, because I, I have been on the board for quite a while. But please correct me. So Destination Tiburon has been paying all that money, right, during COVID, still promoting Tiburon without the money coming in. And this is to make up for that. So it's not, it's not, um, a question of buying double the things. I mean, obviously, the money will go, you know, to, to further promote Tiburon. But it's also, you can't. But it's also, you can't look at it as as doubling the budget. That is not what's happening.
That's exactly how I look at it. Because 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 it's this year and whatever wasn't spent before wasn't spent before.
But Mayor Wellner, John, when when you run a business, right, you're you're paying money all the time. And then when you have a year where you don't get any money and well, let me finish.
I'll let you finish.
Because because I I actually run a small business. And you're you got a year where you're not getting any money in, you're still paying the same cost. You're still paying the salaries, you're still paying for the ads, you're still paying for everything.
So that would, what you're suggesting is that they would have gone into debt. I mean, why, we're not, we're not paying to give them a a a buffer. In other words, if you're saying they continue to spend $200,000 a year when they weren't making $200,000 a year, they would have a negative budget.
Okay, I'm not going to say what they were spending during that whole time. But the American Rescue Plan, go ahead, please.
I'm just going to jump in here because we did slow spending on that. And we, what we did was we took COVID-sensitive advertising to the next level. And so when things started to open up, then we, you know, ran ads and we ran videos that were very COVID-sensitive. We were able to open the Welcome Center at that time. But, you know, things I want to kind of keep in mind is that when people come to stay in the hotels, it's not just the hotel that gets the the revenue tax from it. The restaurants benefit, the merchants benefit from it. So there is an economic impact impact outside of, you know, just them staying and getting me getting my 2% tax on it. And, you know, that it's not necessarily town funds, but, you know, you do, the town will receive the benefit of through other forms of sales tax for it. So and and I'm, you know, forever going to lean back on the idea of that, you know, my sole mission is to make Tiburon thrive again. So, you know, not necessarily the idea of, you know, getting the money back or in no way am I trying to be greedy in what I'm asking for. We are a nonprofit, everything will go back into making Tiburon. The amount that Tiburon is about to open in the in the next 18 months, all of that takes time and effort to advertise for. And advertising is more expensive than ever at this point. So, you know, when we're thinking about the spending of it, we're very strategic and very thoughtful on how we go about that. You can ask my board. And we would like to go beyond the nine counties and, you know, into LA, into California. And so with that, you know, I just, you know, want to make sure that you you all aware that it's not an idea of, you know, please give me this T-Bid money to, you know, backlog what I lost, but to further everything that's going on within town.
I'm waiting for the vice mayor to say something.
Okay. Conversation. I have plenty to say. Excuse me. So I'll start with the wonky academic stuff first. I definitely think that that option two is the academically correct way to calculate, you know, based on the last year. And then technically, we should just apply CPI every year, but 3% is probably close enough. So I think that's the right way to do it. And I definitely support the TOT allocation for both of them in terms of a of a backfill. And then for the for the the bid money, I might actually end up in between, but I'll just tell you like philosophically where I'm coming from first. I I feel like that, you know, so when when the federal government, and I'm I'm not the federal government, but I'm acting like I I know what they're thinking, you know, when they, when they came up with this plan, they wanted to give money to governments because they had, they had to acknowledge that, you know, we lost revenue, but but our operations were essentially the same. Like, we still had a police force that we had to pay. We had, you know, the municipal services that we were delivering, we had public works, except for maybe like, you know, three weeks where everything was shut down. We were still delivering public services and had the expenses commensurate with that. What your request doesn't address is, you know, what were your costs during this time? And and what, you know, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily think it makes sense to just backfill you based on what you earned if, to Mayor Wellner's point, your expenses went down, right? The idea of the federal money was to to bridge the gap between expenses and and revenue. And because the revenue was just particularly affected, but if your expenses went down. So I guess what I would propose is we approve the TOT money. We ask you to come back with a more detailed request when we have a more comprehensive discussion of how to spend the ARP money more broadly, because we haven't had that discussion yet. And I think that is a factor, as Councilmember Fredericks pointed out. It would be nice to have that context of this ask within the broad discussion of how we're going to spend all the money. And 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 then with that, it would be great to see a more detailed ask than we just didn't get this money that a model says we would have gotten. So that would be my proposal to to see if that is acceptable to the other councilmembers, but that's.
I I just wanted to jump in here because we actually did have a meeting to discuss how to spend all the money. And there was not a resolution. And since then, we have been piecemealing money out to other organizations. I don't think it's fair to make them wait, because that would apply to the transit occupancy tax as well. And I don't, the distinction I'm failing to see here is if we're, you know, requiring, if if this is not for the loss, how is the transit occupancy tax different than the TTBID? And logically, if you're voting to compensate the chamber and Destination Tiburon for the transit occupancy tax, why wouldn't the TTBID money be the same? Is it because the number is larger?
It's, I would say.
I I let me just finish. I think that conceptually, I can't understand the difference. I also think that we're creating a much higher standard now for Destination Tiburon versus other organizations that have come before us. I think that they are utilizing the funds wisely. I think that they are promoting Tiburon. And I think they did lose lose the money, as you can see by the charts. So I'm a little uncomfortable with the discussion. You know, I think that we had, we've had our multiple meetings about how to spend the funds. And we have been allocating these funds, you know, to the to the things that we all decide are very important for the future of Tiburon. And that is somewhat based on laws, but it's somewhat based on the CARES Act and what they talk about. And, you know, I think that we've, we've made some really great allocations with the broadband, which everyone knows I love, with contributions to the ranch, to the County Homeless Initiative, to the Late Night Ferry pilot. And I think this is another one that I would love to see, you know, everybody get behind. And, you know, I do, I do believe there are static costs that we're not, we're not compensated for. And I think that we have to look at that. And, you know, I would, you know, ask, again, my colleagues to, you know, think a little more about it. And, you know, maybe kind of take the logic on the transit occupancy tax and try to apply it to the TTBID.
So I go ahead, Councilmember Fredericks, I also have comments, but.
Okay, it's just very short. Look, I think aside from the fact that this is this, the money through the IBID is is just kind of not town discretionary money, that's what makes me uncomfortable. The other thing, as we're talking, I realize that makes me uncomfortable is that it feels like it's two dips into the same federal pot of funds. And and yes, the work is wonderful. And I'm sure if they had more money from all sources, it would be even greater and very creator outreach, but I don't think those are the issues. I think the issues are what are we going to do with the ARP funds? So I would like to make a suggestion when we get around to voting that we split it, the motion, make it two motions. Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too. I guess my comment would be, I I don't know why, I don't understand what you mean by uncomfortable. My my, as if there's some kind of bias against Destination Tiburon or something. That's not what's happening here. I think what's happening is the, at least the way I look at it is the the, you know, the chamber is on a on a small budget and lost basically 50% of that. And they haven't been collecting dues from their members. And I'm very inclined to give them their, you know, to give them this relatively modest amount in order for them to backfill their losses. I think from my point of view, and I could be wrong, but from my point of view, Destination Tiburon has a bigger budget and its budget is more based on immediate spending. In other words, you have more money in a given year, you're able to buy more ads. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that if you didn't spend it one year, you need to make up for it the next. And so I'm willing for kind of symmetry and kind of, you know, not punishing one organization versus another. I'm willing to to treat both entities the same with regard to the TOT money. But with regard to the T, the T-Bid money, I think, I think $200,000 is is the normal amount that they spend each year. And that's what they're going to have this year. And they're going to have more than that because we're backfilling by, I don't know what it is, 60,000, 70, you know, whatever that amount is. So they're going to have more than usual. But unless we make a policy decision that we want to double the amount that we're spending on Destination Tiburon, we shouldn't double the amount. And I I don't think it has anything to do with, I'm not sure what you were alluding to, you know, about being uncomfortable. I just think it is a decision that we have a pot of money, 1.6 million left. We're going to spend it on really good things for the town. There are many options. And I just don't feel comfortable looking backward and saying, well, because the revenues went down, we should just, you know, put that money in. I I think we need to know what we're buying and make a policy decision that that's what we want to spend it on.
Yeah, so the part that makes me uncomfortable is that, you know, Destination Tiburon's entire budget is like 200,000.
Yeah.
So and and the only reason there is the TTBID funding is because it's 2% of the hotel.
Right.
It's it's a tax. So, you know, I I think that in my mind, they have shown shown the loss, right? And they have clearly communicated what it would be spent on. It would be spent on increasing the advertising, the marketing and everything else that benefits Tiburon, that brings people to our town. And that also increases not only our tax base, the TTBID and the transit occupancy tax, plus our our general tax base, because people are in restaurants and people are buying.
Then why wouldn't you propose making the, making it 4% instead of 2%?
So so in my mind, this is exactly why, you know, the CARES Act funding was given. It is to make up and and allow for funds where we've seen great loss. And I think like the chamber, Destination Tiburon has seen that great loss. Now, they're not living high on the hog, they don't have a big $3 million budget here. So I I think the part that makes me uncomfortable is that we're making this distinction. And I think we're making it only because the number is bigger for the loss.
Yeah.
And and I don't, I don't, I I I don't, it makes me uncomfortable because I do feel like they're being held to a higher standard to have to come back and and prove it. And, you know, I I think that that conceptually, I, you know, the transit occupancy tax on the TTBID, in my mind, it's it's the same type of loss. And then if we're funding one, why wouldn't we fund the other? And that also makes me uncomfortable because it just seems like we're making a decision based on, I'm not sure what.
So to the consumer in the hotel, they would, they receive another 2% on top of. So it comes to the hotel or to the visitor as a tax and is passed directly through the town, the T-Bid on to Destination Tiburon or through the T-Bid to DT to fund the marketing for Destination Tiburon. So from a consumer standpoint, from a visitor standpoint, it is a tax. So I just kind of want to make that clear when we're talking, you know, about it. In this, it's kind of abstract at this point, you know, it, we, the town is a pass through for it. But when you're looking at TOT, so as a whole, when I look at TOT and throughout my career with other CVBs, this TOT tax, yes, it's passed through, but when the American Rescue Plan is discussing it, they're specifically saying TOT tax, that T-Bid, TOT tax that's passed through is exactly what they're talking about within it. So I know it is a larger amount and, you know, there's, the pot seems bigger. But our, you know, between our two hotels and the amount that Destination Tiburon spends compared to, you know, a place with even four hotels or San Francisco, it is a very nominal portion of it. So I'll say that.
Okay, so I think the vice mayor said that he had an idea about how to split this in two. Are you gonna?
Well, I'd be having to make a motion to approve the TOT amounts to both the chamber and Destination Tiburon.
Second.
Yeah.
Based on the second model, right?
Yeah, based on the second methodology.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Thier?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Warner?
Yes. And then do we have any additional motions?
Yes. I will move that we approve the TTBID loss to Destination Tiburon of the 207,474.
I'll second.
Okay. Lee, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Fredericks?
No.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Thier?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
No.
Mayor Warner?
No. Okay, so I I think you have an invitation, Stephanie, based on what the vice mayor said earlier, to come back at another time with some detail about how you would spend the money. And we'll, we'll work with you to to figure out when the next discussion on the ARP funds will be. And perhaps we can, we can organize that.
Yeah, wonderful.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I'd like her to be able to come back before we discuss funding overall. I really think that it's not.
Okay, it'll just be, it'll just be an agenda item then, whenever it's appropriate.
Yeah, and also to look at the loss as well, the loss sustained over COVID.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to make sure we memorialize a budget amendment as well. It looks like the combined total of the motion is 103,736. I'd ask perhaps that council do a separate motion approving a budget amendment and that amount with the source of funds to be American Rescue Plan funds.
So moved.
Second.
Lee, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Thier?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Warner?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to suggest at 7:40 that we take a short break and resume our meeting in five minutes.
Okay.
Councilmember Thier, are you here?
I am here, yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure. All right, so, and we can proceed? Okay. All right, so, uh, action item four. Is on the congestion management program. Can we have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Warner. Uh, we have Derek McGill here, the Director of Planning for the Transportation Authority of Marin. He's going to provide counsel a short presentation on why TAM is exploring opting out of the congestion. Management program. So with that said, Derek, you'll be able to share your screen and, and provide the presentation.
Great, thank you, David. Um, good evening, council. I know it's late, so I will do this very expeditiously. Pleasure to be here this evening. As mentioned, Derek McGill, Director of Planning for the Transportation Authority of Marin. We are a sales tax authority and founded as such, but we're also designated as the Congestion Management Agency for Marin County. By resolution, by local resolution. Um, and the CMP is really a remnant from Prop 111 gas tax funding, which has been largely supplanted by SB 1 funding. In transportation that was passed in 2016. But we are, have been required to do a congestion management program every two years and assesses local jurisdictions land use development impacts. On the regional roadway network. We spend about $130,000 doing this every two years and recently received a letter in October of last year. From M T C encouraging us to opt out of this process. There were some implications with this, so we initiated some discussions with our. Public Works Association locally, as well as our planning directors and began legal review. What do we hear during this process was a desire from our planning directors to have a consistent approach to cumulative traffic impact analysis. Our public works directors. The desire for a next generation planning process to really evolve our planning from this 1990 requirement. A lot of support for the value of traffic monitoring and then Tambor. Support for local V M T and transportation planning tools for our local jurisdictions. We do have a government code that we're following that suggests that we can opt out of our CMP requirement with no loss of any local gas tax funding. If the majority of jurisdictions that represent a majority of the county's population pass a resolution to opt out of the CMP. Based on our exhaustive review with M T C, our local public works directors and planning directors, we found no negative impacts to doing. To opting out of this process. We will need to move forward with the countywide transportation plan, which will be subject to further discussion of the TAM board. And in April of this year, our TAM board directed us to opt out of the congestion management program. So with that, we are asking for Town Council to pass a resolution to formally opt out of the CMP process. There are no funding or project impacts expected and. No change in relationship between TAM and our town and the town agent. At this point, either formally or at a staff level, but I am happy to answer any questions. And once again, we are seeking a resolution to formally opt out of this process.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Derek? Councilmember Fredericks, please proceed. Your mute is on.
I just wanted to thank Derek for guiding us through this. You know, in one of the staff reports, either here or TAM, there was a statement. That the CMP analysis potentially conflicts with SEQA and with general plan analyses and goals. Can you just say a little bit about that? The lack of consistency, yeah.
In 2019, there is a change in implementation of. Transportation Impact Analysis under SEQA that has moved to a vehicle miles traveled metric. Local general plans and our congestion management program use a level of service analysis. Both of them are actually different. We use a segment based LOS and our local jurisdictions use an intersection LOS. Those are not acceptable metrics under SEQA any further. And so. Jurisdictions can choose to maintain their general plan level service analysis. Outside of the SEQA Traffic Impact Analysis Guidelines. As subject to basically consistency with a general plan. But under SEQA for large projects, they are now required to use a V M T metric. So opting out of the CMP removes one of those LOS analysis from the equation, which is. The segment based LOS analysis that we required previously. So. We're trying to remove hurdles for local development and not have, you know, three different types of analysis being required in local projects.
So can we ask a follow-up question? Mayor?
Oh, please.
Yeah, so, so. It appears to me from a policy level that LOS sort of focused on reducing congestion by. By improving capacity of the roadway, whereas V M T as a metric is focused on the reduction of greenhouse gases. Is that a fair assessment of what the two metrics are supposed to accomplish?
Correct. Um, one other way of thinking about it is just operations and maintenance of our roadway systems. And I'm sorry, I've got a three-year-old in the background here. And I am.
No problem. We're three-year-old friendly.
Okay. The other consideration is V M T also has an impact on your pavement management. The amount of vehicles and the weight of those vehicles and the mileage that your roadway receives also affects the operations and maintenance of your pavement. In addition to the G H G analysis.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to ask a question out of left field, but. Since you're an expert who's here. You know, one of the big issues we have here in Tiburon is a large and growing congestion problem. And so I guess my question is, do you see? Opting out as something that would in any way. Eliminate something that would benefit us with our. Efforts to tackle the congestion problem, or do you see that as a separate issue where we might? I mean, one of the things that I'm thinking about is proposing our own. Comprehensive traffic study in order to try and figure out strategies to reduce congestion. Is there anything in the CMP that we're opting out of that would benefit us in that regard? Or is that just, is it just a kind of a side thing?
That's a great question. In terms of your, the local management of traffic, that can occur through the CMP program. But it is also a stick. It is a state legislatively defined stick. So. Designation of the CMP network, what the metrics are that we are concerned about is defined by state legislation and there is. No process for removing additional segments or additional metrics. So there are alternative ways of dealing with local traffic congestion, which we all. Deal with on a daily basis and we would encourage other alternative planning processes. Such as mitigation fees or traffic management associations or other sort of. Planning processes to deal with local traffic congestion.
So it sounds like you're suggesting that we, we would have more freedom if we initiated the process on our own. Rather than relying on the. Pre-existing legislation.
Yes. And this is a fun management with a three-year-old in the background.
I know, you're doing a very good job. Keep multitasking. Okay, those are my questions. Are there any further questions? All right, let's open it to the public. Is there anyone in the? Public who would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Let's close the public comment session and bring it back to council. Are there any further comments from council?
You trust my concerns, Mayor Warner. Thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you. All right, uh, so I need a motion to. Opt out.
I'll make that motion that be opt out of the Marin County Congestion Management Program.
My second.
Great. Uh, Lee, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fredericks.
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin.
Yes.
Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor Warner.
Yes. Okay, we're opted out. Thank you, Derek. Next, uh, we have action item five, which is the town's response to the. Marin County Grand Jury's Report on Affordable Housing. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, very brief, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as you indicated, this item relates to a grand jury report that was released on June 24th, 22. 2022 entitled Affordable Housing Time for Collaboration in Marin. And that's attached as exhibit one to your staff report. Tashed as exhibit two is the draft response to that grand jury report. Um, and I would simply note that the grand jury report included 10 findings. That the, that the proposed draft indicates the town agrees with all 10 findings. It asked the town to respond to one recommendation, R1. And the town's proposed response to that recommendation is included in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. So are there any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Uh, does any member of the public wish to comment on this agenda item? Okay, I don't see any comments, so we'll close the public comment period and bring it back. For comments. Uh, does anyone have any comments? Looks like there aren't any, so. Do I have a motion to adopt the town's response?
Second.
Okay, Lee, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fredericks.
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin.
Yes.
Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor Warner.
Yes. All right, thank you. Then finally, we have a public hearing and this is on municipal code amendments related to. Police use of. Military equipment, AB 41. Can we have a staff report, please?
There he is. I was gonna say, I was expecting the chief to come on any minute, but there he is.
There I am. So we have a PowerPoint up. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council. This presentation is regarding. Assembly Bill 481, which is. Which pertains to the acquisition funding and maintenance of what is defined as military equipment. And I will just say, before I get into the presentation, the term military equipment is a little bit misleading. The legislation, the way it was written was a little confusing, so it took us some time and working with. Uh, our town attorneys to, to interpret it properly, and we believe that we have and. I will go forward with my presentation. So next slide, please. So this was signed in the law on September 30th of 2021. And it requires every municipal police agency to have similar. Have a similar town ordinance governing, governing the use of this equipment. In the form of a departmental policy. We have created a draft policy that's T P D policy or Tiburon Police Department Policy 706. This policy does. The acquisition and use as defined by the statute for military equipment. Now, the draft, the draft policy was posted on the public website on May 9th of 2022. Fulfilling a 30-day requirement prior to bringing it, bringing it before council for adoption. So. It was made publicly available on that date. Our policy is aligned with other policies here in Marin County and for that matter statewide. Just to, to clarify, T P D or Tiburon Police Department has not acquired any equipment in our inventory from the military. Next slide. So I will just kind of briefly go over one of the, the, the main sections on this. I know that all of you have an opportunity to read this. Draft along with the staff report. But this just kind of highlights some of the main sections that are within the policy. One in particular that I know is of interest is how does this address our mutual aid support that we rely on so heavily? Uh, our policy is drafted similar to the other policies in our county because of the fact that we are so dependent on mutual aid. In the event of an emergency. And basically what our policy states in line with the other policies in the county is that. Other agencies responding to Tiburon to, for a mutual aid assistance will abide by their own policies. As it relates to military equipment, because these policies have gone through the same type of vetting process with their governing bodies. So I'll go to the next slide. So I wanted to show you the equipment that we have that we believe. Is qualifying equipment per the definition in the statute. And the first piece of equipment we have here is a pepper ball pack semi-automatic launcher. This is a less lethal force option. And then we don't, I will say that we don't, we only have one of these. Um, it is not carried around in the field. It is kept in an armory and it's only to be used. In limited situations where we feel the deployment of this tool would be beneficial. So next slide. This shows you what the projectile looks like. It's basically a paintball. And instead of, just like you see people that have these, that compete in paintball wars. It's the same basic theory. The launcher is very similar to the same type of paintball launchers you would see in, in a normal paintball. Watching mechanism. launching mechanism. The only difference is that this projectile contains oleoresin capsicum, which is basically concentrated cayenne pepper. It's a chemical agent. It's the same type of agent that our officers carry in a spray spray can on their gun belts. So next slide. So what are the applications for something like this? Generally speaking, this would be something we might use in a large fight where you have a group of individuals or an individual that are aggressor. It would allow us to be more targeted with the deployment of this chemical agent rather than using a spray device where there's a greater likelihood of unintentional contamination with bystanders. So again, this this allows for more precise deployment of that chemical agent. And to be used in limited situations like a large fight, perhaps a riot that broke out in an otherwise peaceful and lawful protest if there were folks in there trying to create cause harm to those peacefully protesting or otherwise. Again, we could otherwise try to deploy this device to be targeted in the deployment of the gas agent rather than just indiscriminately put it out and risk bystander contamination. Next slide. The other piece of equipment is our Remington Model 870 12 gauge shot 12 gauge shotgun less lethal delivery system. Again, this is another less lethal option that we have. This tool is in fact a regular shotgun. However, it has been marked, as you see, it's painted and marked to indicate that it's for only for use for less lethal. As a matter of fact, we don't deploy shotguns at Tiburon Police Department for lethal force. We only deploy them for less lethal options, so we don't even have regular shotgun ammunition. So what we have is the less than lethal ammunition. And next slide. This shows you what the projectile looks like. Again, we compare it to a quarter there to give you an idea of the size. Basically, what you have inside the casing of that shotgun round is a beanbag. And when it hits someone, it's basically like getting punched very hard. This is what it what it does. So they also call it a flexible baton. Next slide. So what are the applications for this tool? Again, in any situation where we would want to apply a less lethal option that would be targeted where we could keep distance, where it'd be feasible for us to otherwise have a standoff distance or stay away from the intended target. It may be used in some scenarios involving somebody armed with a knife or bat or something of that situation. It would provide us with an additional option in addition to a force option to try to resolve that incident safely. Next slide. So this is not currently listed on our inventory. And again, this was a little bit of some of the the interpretation issues with the with the legislation. It talks about command and control vehicles. We included this in this slide for council's consideration as to whether or not you would like us to include this in the inventory. If so, we don't have to make any changes to the policy. The policy verbiage stays the same. All we do is add this to our inventory. Next slide. Applications for this, this is our supervisor vehicle. The reason why it is set up as you see is in this instance, what it allows for is if we had an incident where we had a lot of officers or we called for mutual aid from other jurisdictions. The sergeant in essence could stand at the rear of the vehicle while he was talking to different entities and still have radio communications back there as well as as access to their computer for maps and computer aided dispatch purposes. AB 481 defines a command and control vehicles as being built or modified to facilitate operational control and direction of public safety units. So that's the definition. That's that's straight out of the statute. Next slide, please. And this is what typically you would see as a traditional command and control vehicle. Traditional, it even says mobile incident command center. We think that that is what the intended the intended legislation is meant to cover. But to play it safe, we included our supervisor vehicle in there for your consideration. But again, this would be your traditional mobile command vehicle and that's the purposes and what I've seen from other agencies. The other agencies I reviewed have not listed our vehicle that we've shown you as a command vehicle, but rather something more along these lines. So next slide. So staff recommendations is for the town council to consider adopting this town ordinance, which would otherwise allow us to adopt Tiburon Police Policy 706, governing military equipment. And to to decide whether to add Tiburon Police, the Tiburon Police Supervisor Vehicle to the inventory of qualifying equipment. Sorry, I have an eight year old walking in on my radio. So I'm glad that we're kid friendly.
You saw that. Okay, good.
Yes, I did. So anyways, at this point, I would open it up to council for any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Griffin?
Yes, Chief, thanks for coming before us today. Would the supervisory vehicle look more like what we already have or the vehicle that you just showed us? That's the first question.
Yeah, it looks like what we already have, which is your standard police vehicle. And basically, when you just open up the back instead of compartments there for equipment that patrol officers would carry, it has us and it has those those same compartments. But it also has the addition of a mobile radio that they could use, the same radio you would find in the front of the car. And it also has a docking station for the computer that could be moved from the front of the car to the rear.
So we would be looking like something for that like that. Okay, secondarily, the 870 12 gauge shotgun that's salmon colored, that says not for lethal use. Is it possible that we have one of those that looks like the so that the color of the launcher for the pepper ball looks similar to that because optics are really important in situations? And if it looks like you've got an AR-15 out there, it'll escalate the situations. People are going to think less of the police department and more rumors are going to fly. Is that possible?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, that in aftermarket, we can do whatever we want to. And if we want to paint the stock or something, I know that other agencies have done that with certain equipment. That's certainly something we can do if it, you know, because I definitely understand the optic standpoint. If that that tool was deployed. So yes, to your question, I think that that is something we can do.
Yeah, I know, because even growing up with my kids who were 38 and 40, I would not allow them to play with any kind of gun or something that looked like machine gun. I didn't want some officer coming to my door late at night saying, I'm sorry, Mr. Griffin, it looked like you had a real gun. So these are real concern to me. So if they can guarantee me that, I'd be in favor of voting for this. Thanks.
Other questions? Oh, Councilmember Thier?
Yes, I had a question. Hi, hi, Chief. How are you?
Hello, Councilmember Thier, how are you?
I'm okay. Thank you for that presentation. So the question that I had is that you asked us a question. Would we consider the police, you know, supervisor vehicle to be within the statute? And I wanted to hear your opinion on that and what you think. And then also what what are the consequences if we put it in? And what are the consequences if we don't put it in?
Those are great questions. And and I will tell you that we don't know. And that's one of the things that that we've been discussing with our with the with the town attorney is, you know, what does this legislation mean? And what happens if we do or don't do something as it relates to the legislation? And that component to the legislation is still unclear. But I see that the town attorney has signed on. So do you want to expand on that?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think it is unclear, the definition as the chief has stated. I see no downside to including it because it's unclear. And if we if someone made the argument that it applied and we didn't have it on the on the list, then they could say we're in violation of the ordinance. So I think the more conservative approach is to include it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's that's what I was thinking. Okay.
I would tend to agree with that. That would be that would have been my same response is I think from a conservative standpoint, because the legislation, the wording and the legislation is so vague. It's better to have it than not have it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So I have a question for you, Chief. When I was reviewing the proposed resolution, it said that any future purchases of military equipment would be contained in an annual report that would be issued by the police department. And I'm wondering if you have any thoughts or or concerns about if we were to change that provision from being in the annual report to being something more specific, like would be reported to the council within 30 days or something like that? Is that would that be an issue? Or is that something that you think would be practical?
So just just to be clear, Mayor, this would be if we had decided to acquire something.
Exactly, if you
Only in that event and otherwise no, I I personally do not see an issue with that. It goes above and beyond what the statute requires. And I don't think that, you know, we're not going to get ourselves in any trouble going above and beyond. And so I personally don't see an issue with something like that. They don't, we don't have anything planned.
Exactly. I mean, I I don't anticipate you do. I just think it would be something that would be not you rather than being buried is too strong a word, but rather than being just contained in a bigger annual report, if we were alerted when you when the department saw fit to pursue some surplus military equipment or some equipment falling in this definition, the council could be notified in some reasonable period of time.
Yeah, I I don't, I think that's completely reasonable.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Chief. Standby, there may be more. Let's open it up for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on this agenda item? I see no one, so we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to council. Are there any comments? Okay, I guess I would just reiterate my comment. I would make that one minor amendment is what I would propose. If no one objects to that, then I think I'll propose a motion with that amendment. Okay, so I don't see any objections. So I moved to adopt the resolution with the amendment that rather than, oh, go ahead.
It's an ordinance before you tonight, so
An ordinance. Oh, right, okay. So we have to do the double.
Yep.
Who wants to do that? I think the vice mayor wants to do that. No? All right, let me get my agenda.
I can do it. So I'll I'll move that we read by title only to carry the motion. And then introduce the ordinance by reading the title of the ordinance. Is that a motion that suffices?
And then how do we do the amendment, Ben?
Oh.
As amended.
As amended by the mayor.
Got it. Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Terrific. Lee, can you take the role, please?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Thier?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Walner?
Yes. And then now.
And then a motion to introduce the ordinance by reading the title of the ordinance, which is an ordinance of the town council, the town Tiburon Military Use Ordinance.
So moved. Thank you. Lee, can you take the role, please?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Thier?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And Mayor Walner?
Yes. All right, so well, I guess we'll see this at our next council meeting for a second reading. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, councilmembers. Good night.
All right, good night. Next, our town council reports. Does anyone have a report for the for the council? No. And town manager report?
Excuse me, very briefly, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder to council that the regular meeting of the council scheduled for October 5 will be canceled. Our next regular meeting will be October 19. Unless there there could be a reason to have a special meeting before that, but at this point, we were not anticipating that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're done for the night. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.